Good afternoon, everyone. We are gathered here today for a special meeting for the City Commission. Today is October 25, 2021. And we will start with our General Manager, Mayor, and the President of the Commission. So please, let's rise. Heavenly Father, we have gathered here today to connect business for our city. I ask you that you bless us all, that you give us wisdom and guidance, that you fill our hearts with love, and that you bless us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and in its just cause.
Okay, we'll do a quick roll call. Zone 1, Commissioner Bassam. Zone 2 is running late at Commissioner Arco's 11:00. Zone 3, Commissioner Bassam.
I'm here too.
Zone 4, Vice Mayor Collin.
I'm here too.
We also have our City Administrator, Ms. Eliette. Our Director of Administration, Ms. Dominique. We also have our City Attorney, Mr. Scott Sisson. And also present with us is our Public Works staff. We have Tiffany and our Chief of Police, Chief Morris. Before we move forward, we have additions, additions, and applications to the agenda as presented. Commissioner?
Yes.
Staff? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and just kind of do a little bit different form that we have here today. So we have any other speakers? Okay, there is a public speaking part coming up. And we will be opening up our public forum. And just on record, Commissioner Arco has just walked in from the side of the theater. So Tom, before you sit down, we have public forum right in front. So we're ready. Is this forum a top or a bottom? Okay, so it's not public forum. Okay. Well, since we don't have anyone wishing to come up and speak, we will move over to number 5, Commission consideration. And the first one is establish the annual salary of the Chief of Police. And for input, we will have our City Administrator.
As Mayor, Commissioner, we recall the last meeting, that Thursday evening, Chief Mullins was appointed to position Chief of Police in Department of SAS. At that time, he needed to move into the next day at 12:00. He failed to establish a salary. His salary as the interim chief is based on his salary as a commander in the police department. But it is appropriate now to consider the full position and his salary for that. I know the recommendation that his salary be set at $70,000. And you recall Chief Walker was making approximately $73,000. And that's not to really reflect a foreigner in Chief Mullins. And it would be appropriate to be able to give him a side increase. After six months, he says, "It's up to you to take the form if you think that way." So that's our recommendation. Obviously, it's available, but we will do it once it's set to salary.
Take that.
How much is that, does the increase over what you're currently making? And is it funded?
Over what?
Over his current salary?
He's presently making $53,000.
$55,000, $130,000.
Yeah, $55,000. And it is funded, yes, because we talked about the entire position of the Chief of Police and Commander.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, did you want to come and see the first conference? Or did you want to go ahead and tell me the one conference? You want to go about that? Let's see. Okay. So Tom, did you have your partner and your analogy? Your minutes on the clock?
I'll be quick. Good evening, my name is Tom Preston, and I'm a 352, and a 88. While you're discussing the new police chief's salary, but in your kitchen, the job posting for that position is taken directly from the city website today. The position lists a salary range between $74,000 and $84,000. That's a range that all applicants saw when applying for the position. So I just want to ask, why are you now negotiating a salary of $70,000? A salary that's five and a half percent below the advertised salary? Did I miss something here? Because if I didn't, then where I come from, we call that a big switch. My thoughts on that would be, if you follow through on this path, others that applied for that position could very well start to wonder, maybe negotiating a backman deal poses not the opportunity to get the job. I personally don't think that's the case here. But I would ask that you consider the opposite of it. And say, "Take my seat, I will maintain my confidence, and you'll make great decisions now." That's all. Thanks for having me on the screen.
Thank you.
My opinion on answering your question. The salary arrangement was posted was based on the job requirements of that position. Our new police chief is working on reaching that level. He hasn't gotten there yet. So that does leave us some leeway to come a little bit below that.
And four, I would request that you read what the ad says on the city's website also. I understand obviously what you're talking about. Before I make a decision, I'd like to hear from Chief Mullins. Because, as I spoke again, we have way more concern about making sure his staff is taking care of him at that portion. So I'd like to hear.
Chief Mullins, gradually correct, Commissioner Bassam. I am not arguing with my salary, it depends on my position, just another. I'm just putting it in the gear handles. I don't, I know that historically, when there becomes a big spot in the city, especially at a higher level, that over a period of time, that person picking that spot is coming and picking the significantly higher pay of the person who has it. And I don't know if it happens. My guys aren't working, and I don't want to show you that much.
Are you happy with this deal?
I am.
Hello, Captain Morris.
I'd like to hear from the City Administrator, why you propose $70,000 versus the $74 advertised myself.
It's traditional for any employee to receive a reconsideration after it's in traditional life. After six months, it's a nice thing to be able to say, "You've done a great job, you've got a new position, and we're back up to the budget of $74, whatever it is." So this is not to demean the chief. So far, I think it's been going very well in the last several days. That's just the way I always, how I propose we do it. And later on, if you find out the chief is considering being really doing the way of the position of job or commander, for the very same reasons he gave you a few minutes ago, to provide funding for equipment for the personnel. So I think it's very preferable for the faculty. I think the commission needs to allow for growth, and once the growth is there, to reward the growth. If you allow for the growth, doesn't add anything to grow into, then we're into a funded situation, which is not terrible, but it's just not a fun position.
Well, in my opinion, this decision seems to make much of it unhappy. So I put my wish on the table to second your recommendation, $70,000. Second.
Can I ask something else that consists with a... Is that, I want to say ask you, are you referring to bringing it up to that scale within a six-month period? Exactly, you mentioned that right now, did I get that correct?
What I would do is recommend we go to that budgeted scale of $73,000. At some point, in the next six months, we're roughly about three six months. There's a lot of things that Chief and I are working on. Actually, he's working on $73,000. But I think it's a good thing to have the competing. And it'd be good if we were, had the type of performance.
Did you say $73,000 or $74,000, which was what we advertised?
Same thing, $74,000. Something here, rather, so I'm confused.
Just want to make sure that's clear, that after six months, it's $74,000 or $73,000?
I wouldn't lock ourselves into any other number at this point. I think we need to do a review in six months and adjust the number at that point.
Or maybe six before that time, or maybe somewhere between six and seven.
There you go.
So we do have a motion by Bassam, a second by Eric, to bring the salary for Chief Mullins to $70,000. So four?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
One? Yes, can I say yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for taking that for the minute. And the next item that we have is the Commission Director for appointing me, called the Works Director, and the Media and Social Department, our City Administrator.
Thanks, Mayor, I have a question. The next item is a little more complex. As you know, with retirement of Chris Mullins, we appointed Seth Mendoza to be the interim. And at the same time, it took a couple of other steps to engage the permanent management officials to take over essentially the management operation of water system, which Rich had a class 3 license. So a class 3 license is no longer required of the director, although it certainly would be an asset to have a class 3 license, which Seth does not have. And so it would be appropriate, I think, now to consider the salary of Seth Mendoza as he is not only active interim director. But before we do that, I think it's probably more important to think about how you would like to build that firm and position. We recall that Chief Walker retired with a fair deal more time to consider. We did go out for advertisements, we got in 36 candidates in here. And the commission's opinion was that we really had a good person there, so I had to go through the chore of going through 36 resumes, which we did. Right now, I think we have a good candidate, but that doesn't mean that he will be the perfect candidate. But I would like to suggest that we set Seth as the interim director, elevate his salary, and recruit another worker as a three-step process. But that would give us the opportunity to see him in action. I mean, people on staff have seen him in action, they've been to the 15 years, he's not a non enough entity. But how does he fit the management role? And that's the deciding factor in these cases. So I would suggest that we give Seth an increase. I'll discuss that in a second. The more quarterly that we call out advertising, until you see the performance. And then if it does not perform, it's a very simple matter to say, "We're going to interview a whole bunch of people, including yourself," and then you've got to slate this team right open. So that's the first question, I don't know what to proceed. If has now placed Seth in an interim position in back in two to six months and said, "We're going to interview the back manager."
Motion.
I personally believe in a hire from the end, to give employees a path to grow and to provide a better life for themselves and their family. So I'm a fan of hiring. But I also want to make sure that they have the tools to do the job going in to enter with the opportunity to see that. I'd like to also like to hear from Seth, if he has a desire to do continuing education and possibly get his class 3 license. Because even if we leave it sublet, which may be a better choice from a protection perspective, liability if you will, it still is nice to know that somebody has the ability to do the job out in the end.
Yes, sir.
All right. See how public speaking is right on the table? Yeah. Very good.
Thank you, Seth.
My name is Seth Mangasa, for the Works. Yeah, the whole class C, I did it supports, I just have to take the exam. Yeah, but with everything that's happening right now, I'm not sure what we're going to do yet. So that's why I'm kind of going back to the safety. Because I'm unsure if we're going to take it or not, you know, depending on what is decided. So I would like to get it, and continue on with other classes, whatever I need to get done, so.
Do you think it might be more valuable than what we have?
Well, yeah, anything with the classes certificate makes you better at anything. So it's just another notch in your, on your app, I don't need to do it, I mean. So is it, is it not on touch, you go straight to the room? I'm not sure, I think you have to go and take it at a certain location and time list. So depending on where it's at, I will take it, I'll keep it online as hard as I have to check it to do that.
Why don't you keep us abreast of your progress?
I think.
Chill with it, anything you need, nobody can help you.
Thank you.
It wouldn't hurt to get it. Because from what I've been talking with our administrator, that would possibly be within the Public Works Department handling a separate water department with two or three people, that that's all they take care of, is the wells and water system. That would help in that effort.
Yeah, I agree with you, I mean, it would help, I mean, if we get back to that, it's a, it's a few people. They just need Seth to handle people with that, so.
Any other?
Yeah. So where do you see yourself six months from now?
Hopefully, as Public Works Director.
Yeah, and then about a year from now.
Public Works Director, and hopefully with the full crew.
There you go. You know what I'm looking for, you and I have had these conversations already. Even recently, we've had these conversations. So it's important for me to understand where this is going to be added to. You know, we were spoiled for all these years, you know, we were part of that being spoiled. Well, now you're offered. If this commission decides to proceed that way. And, you know, having a local, having a local fellow, a local individual that's committed to that is very important to me as well. And so you told me what I want to get here. Is leave your department, right? And be that department, it's all been so full of lack. Although third-party services have its advantages, the small cities, nine hours, where a strong time of third parties could be a little bit longer than you being right here. Right. And so we were very successful in third-party financial aspect. And the financial aspect of our city really doesn't require someone to be here full-time, especially with the systems we have in place. Jobs like yours, positions that are responsible like yours. I depend on it as a commissioner, I depend on it as a citizen. So I appreciate you talking to me. I appreciate you, your candidate, your candidate. And I would love the city to ever be this position. And you know, you know the job out there. No question about it. It hit you pretty hard on that Friday afternoon with...
Well, yeah, it was just...
It's all, it was poetic, it was almost a perfect storm in the mountains. We'll get to that discussion later in a few minutes. I appreciate your service, appreciate your time, and thank you, sweetie.
No problem.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work and dedication. And if you're aware and you need something, just let us know. I think with the new water demand and all of the ground penetrating, I think that'll help, you know, ease the transition.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard right now, but, you know, we just have to go forward and go from here. That's all we can do.
Roger, yes? Well, I want to say, Commissioners, what I've seen from Seth in the last four years is a lot of hard work and dedication. I'm really happy to know that military experience does create a little discipline here. So let's see him be very disciplined, show off, and work done with a good attitude. And I've always noticed that about him, thank you for doing that, always bringing your best, and thank you.
Thank you.
So Commissioners, do we have any more information?
There's three sections to this, maybe Seth should ring with the microphone. The first one is to, whether you're going to advertise a position or keep Seth on an interim basis. If so, we need to give him a salary commensurate with responsibilities. It sounds like you better keep him on an interim basis, not advertise until you see performance, which is what I'm recommending. The second thing is, the salary remains on the interim without advertising. Let me give you the perspective. When Rich was, with 25 years, 25 and a half years' experience, and a class 3, he was making just after the $34.27 per hour.
Seth, did you know it was $34.27 per hour? His last week, so to speak.
$34.27, right. And first, this is all plus benefits. Now Seth does not really have class 3, and we've talked about getting that. That's the C. I would recommend $25 per hour. And if he does get a class 3, then we can consider elevating. If he becomes a permanent, we should consider elevating again. So that's my dollar recommendation for him as an interim, which is, I might add, similar, not really. Chief Mullins was making just about $55,000 for the interim time as chief, this would be $52,000. Hard to compare those two. Life safety, water is life safety too, so. But that just gives you a frame of reference. So those are the comparisons on salary. The American position, $25 per hour during the examination period, we called that. And then up to the commission, in 36 months, we'll see how it's going to look. And make a permanent decision, give it for him as a director, or go out for advertising for the community. Build that position.
Do you want to deal with it multiple motions, or all in one, or how do you want to deal with it?
Well, I'm just going to do it three, but it sounds like we're blending in to each other, so.
Yeah.
Let me, let me do it.
And in cleanliness, I think we put a motion on the table to accept him as our interim Public Works Director and not put it out to bid.
A second.
And I'll follow that with a motion on salary after I ask the same two questions I asked before. Which were, are you happy with this, and how much is the difference between what you're currently making and what you're not, this time?
So let's press the one that come on you first, okay? So we do have a motion by Commissioner Bassam to set Seth Mendoza as the interim Public Works Director and not put it out to bid. And this is second by Commissioner Bassam. So all of you, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. So what's the next one? Do you want to move on to this question?
The next one, which is to answer the three questions. One, how much of a raise is this up with the current management? Two, what you're tapping with this arrangement?
He is presently making $21.50 per hour, and I see it. What, $23, excuse me?
It's currently $23.50.
So $23 is her as the interim of Rich's plan. And we're suggesting to the $25. Are you happy with that, Seth?
Yeah, I'll follow that.
But within a set period of time, where you're going to revisit the salary, if he gets his class 3 license, and you start showing, you're building your department, you're building your way of the Mendoza way, right? And then if we start seeing that, and I'm sure this commission is going to be amicable to compensate and convince you to report him.
Yeah, yeah, I'll follow that. It'll be, they have a, not really likely.
Well, yeah, but you're allowed a different program, I'm sure.
Oh, indeed, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything for the city.
Yes, sir.
I think the motion is fund the position, $25 per hour, and review it in six months.
A second. Do we have any motion by Commissioner Bassam, where they set the by Commissioner Bassam to fund this interim position for Seth Mendoza, $25, and review it in, and connect for review in six months? We got a second by Bassam. Paul Ferrizella?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Does that encompass everything, or we have one more?
We have one more.
Do we have any anything? Anybody wish to comment on this?
We have one more on the same topic, it was not on your agenda, but I'd like to approach Seth. We had a gentleman working for us for the next two to three years named Austin Caruso. And he was an excellent employee, he was paying $17 an hour, left separately because of money, playing on the ground. He installed playground equipment, which sounds very expensive, because you're going to have lots of playground equipment either to install or maintain. But he is a very talented person, he's a go-getter, very energetic, we were all impressed, and started to see him go. Seth took it upon himself to visit the gentleman. He lives, is he living? Nah, he goes to...
Nah, he gets in North City.
In North City.
Oh, that's a striking name. But anyway.
Seth approached him and said, "Would you be interested in coming back? We're fleshing out a new department." And he said he was, but he would only if he were allowed to be the interim assistant, which is what Seth was till a few minutes ago, at a salary of $21.50. He would get it, I don't know if he was from his first position. With that, you're due to share the leadership roles with Seth in building of the department. I commend Seth with taking the initiative to recruit a good individual, he is. You know, this is building, we're starting to go on something. There was literally one day when Seth was the Public Works Director. There was literally one day when Sette was the Public Works Director and the Public Works Department on his end days. Anyway, guess who they're there? Where, that's my third recommendation for this particular number. If you retain Austin Caruso.
Isn't that a customer? Customer, yeah, I remember.
This clearly shows how you manage skills right out of the gate. And he's good at helping as a good people and going off on his own to procure. So I would, I would reward that behavior by doing what you want. We all know how the, how the impact of wages on the backs. Government voted to change the minimum wage from the rest of the world. What's going on in the country with everything that's going on. Wages are going to do nothing but go up. It's probably a healthy thing, but still, where the fish is, he can make sure the budget's balanced. And so, you know, I can hear the naysayers already and all others. And I want it down there again, but the reality, we're going to spend money on this, spending like a few cents.
From what I recall, Austin worked very well with you and Jason too.
Yes, he did.
He was a good team, team member.
The good thing about him is that he also completed the course for the classes. So we're both in the same position. And that, which is another reason I kind of get with him, because he's really pretty good with the book smart. And he's Peter Sager. So that makes two people instead of just one, doing all the, you know, working.
Another thing that's surrounding yourself within the system, I think every department should have in the system. How do you go on vacation if you don't have a right hand?
Exactly. And that is one of the reasons I, because he already knows the system. He knows not a lot of anything about the meter installers. He knows all that already, so, you know, which is a plus. And it would help out a lot, especially like right now. It would be, I think it would be a good idea to have a hand in that.
And he can jump in with the, you know.
Yeah, he's a young man, he's familiar with the city. He's been there over two years when you worked there.
Oh, I thought to make a motion to, for the $21, what was it?
For, yeah, I think, yeah, $21.50.
$21.50, okay.
For hours.
I would just like to add one thing. I remember Austin, when I was doing the field day, he didn't have to stay. He landed, he set out, and he came back. He was just here the whole time helping citizens, you know, unload their cars. It's very hard working with Austin. And we do have, come on up and speak. Roger, go ahead. If you want a second. So we do have a motion, I believe, by...
See you, Sette.
By Bassa and Bassa. Do you need, oh, do you need a second? I made it, I shot it, I cut it, I said, okay.
Yeah, if I didn't second it, I meant, she must be here in my brain.
Okay, just. Ron, you're thinking, you know, that might answer a few questions.
I need Sette back up. We don't want to build your team for you. Is this what your recommendation is? Is that happening if you're a assistant?
Yeah.
Because you need to build your team so that you can make the system work the way you need it to work.
I think any person I think having me in there is one block from building up. Because we would just start from here, and you already know what these guys did, like say. And then you have two people that already finished the course, so it's that's exactly. And then whatever anything else we need to do, I can pretty much rely on him. Education wise, because he's pretty good smart, you know, to get it done. So that is a big plus on me. We can help you with a lot of stuff that I need up in the top. And then both of us manage it by us, and we can get it, we can straighten that.
Just before I get a quick statement to make here.
By this way, say, hey?
And I took, I'm trying to do it too late. This is what's called perfect timing. I thought the day of death and him. Jason's leaving at the end of the month, okay? We just purchased all this new equipment back of everything we got now, right? And my thing is, this is perfect time because this gentleman can get their own equipment. He can repair equipment and run it wrong.
To the market.
Yeah, so what we're doing is a perfect time to put this gentleman back in to help there to get things done because they're all this equipment, everybody's running. Well, not just, because of...
Thank you, good evening. Anyone else wish to comment? And now we do have a motion to bring Austin Caruso as interim Public Works Assistant at $21.50 by Bassa and second by Bassa. All in favor, say aye.
One last question. What does this new position, seniority and everything else, does he brand new employment again? Or does he?
Austin's seniority.
Austin's seniority.
He is, come here.
I think Austin's seniority. We don't really deal with seniority that much, but if you feel comfortable, I would simply restate the time he was drawn, call it a spat or something. And let us seniority go into the original hiring.
Yeah, my only uncomfortability is that it's just set the precedent, that's all. And I don't know where we are as far as what perks may be attached based on seniority.
There are, not as I know of.
What was your opinion?
Vacation rule and PTO. Other than that, you know, we are in a position now that when somebody leaves, their mark is either eligible for rehire or not eligible for rehire. Austin's mark is definitely eligible for rehire. And given the short duration of his absence, I would have no problem simply reestablishing his seniority. Now, if he was cashed out with vacations, he probably was, I think we're going to have to...
See there?
Not, he starts over.
He starts over. Yeah, but PTO, whoever, whatever kind of books he paid for, it probably isn't...
Mr. Franch, do you want to add anything? I wasn't sure.
Well, I mean, my whole suggestion would be to wait until you go from interim to permanent and address it then. But if you want to do it now, but I... I think you're talking about accumulation rate. Somebody who's longer here and longer has a higher accumulation rate than somebody who's... So, but other than that, he cashed out all, I think it was full time. I would not repress that if he's probably cashed out. I would start at zero, change it to four, change it. My whole, I think, wait until you go from interim to permanent before you address that issue.
Any further? Okay, so there's a motion to bring Austin Caruso as interim Public Works Assistant at $21.50. Presented by Bassa and second by Bassa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Just ask, be patient, that's it. We'll be shocked.
Okay, would you have any more comments? Which is, position of Police Commander in the Police Department.
Yes.
Please.
Chief Mullin, Mullins salute for this area. We had seven positions and we, and still do have seven positions in the budget for the fish. We got the chief, the commander, and five officers. The chief and I are the agreement, and he certainly supports my recommendation. He tells me as of today. But the question is, what do we do with the police department position? Should we fill that? Technically, we consider that. What the chief would rather do, and I certainly concur that he saw, is that we leave that position and take it, leave those dollars in the budget. Because there's still a lot of things that need to happen in the police department. Salary increases, we know already have to happen. Equipment needs to happen. This will give us, you know, a fall back position in terms of funding to do a lot of those things. Then next budget, we can analyze the amount we really could need. Commander, department's working well with the chief and five officers. So the question is, do we not fill the commander's position as assistant? Who recommends we do that?
Clearly, you've already talked to chief about this. And the chief's department worked for you. I would have a tendency to take the recommendation and just move it.
See, now I think it's not yet.
Do you wish to speak on this, or?
I can't. Reason why I decided not to fill the commander position is...
Hold on a second, just for the record, we have two more to discuss.
Oh, reason I decided not to fill the commander position is because it's a high, it's a high one. And we do not have a large department. Moving somebody in the commander position to a different level, it's a non-essential. We're going to have their holidays, they're going to lose their overtime. And our officer's cover shift has needed for other people. So if an officer moves, that even if he leaves a significant amount of money. He would move it up, he would lose it. And that was a little too great. So I'd like to take the money from that position and spread it out. So we can have every officer move up instead of just picking one, moving them up, moving everyone else up.
Makes sense.
If I explain that properly.
How about the workload? You, I know you've done the commander, the paperwork and all that, this whole time.
I was, I was doing it privately, I'm interim, I'm doing it now. The workload is all, you have to take that responsibility.
Okay, good to hear. Thank you.
Do you have a member recommended that would be able to fill your shoes if you were asked for whatever you can? I think.
That right?
Just one clarification. I don't think the chief would necessarily say it quite this way. But that pool money that we would keep in the budget would be used for equipment and for salary adjustments. The salary adjustments would be determined first by a salary requirement to issue your permits. It's not a matter of simply $500 in the, okay, if you're on the street. The same true for the police.
Anybody else wish to comment on this?
We need a motion to... I would think we would. There's a big position, right? And it could instruct me not to do...
What's he trying to do?
Not do. Leave the dollars.
So make a motion to not fill the position and leave the...
Funding exists.
Funding exists. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Sure.
Any other discussion here? Baker, please come up.
Burton, Burton, six ninety, that's a high. One of the reasons that we created the commander's position, because at the time, my forehoast was lieutenant. And Chief Chester was the chief. And it came up at some time that the second in command would have to go to other pom stop meetings. And with having a rank, that would be commensurate with the kind of position that you have. We had a corporal, we had a corporal. So without having from, from police chief down to corporal or to just officer, it might help to have an interim rank that, that, you know, does not command. That would be an interim rank that another officer could be in next line.
Lieutenant sergeant position.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had a need to go up, but when we did have the lieutenant, the reason we had the lieutenant, Chief Chester was running pretty much the cafe and welcomed me all of the pom stop meetings. And because he was a lieutenant, everybody else had a big grab. So he just asked us to increase that, I don't even think he got a pay raise, but he did get, he did get a rank. So without having that rank in the middle, that is, might be something to consider to have up my interim rank.
Thank you. Any further?
There's no reason why I can't find any time down the road. I'm curious, how would, Marty need to do? Never mind.
I think what Chief Paul's been in the department of the police department was, they've attempted to build this team. Build the needs.
Okay. I'm sure he'll find the right man to work with us, and so have any... Yes? You're done? Ready? Okay, so we do have a motion here for this, I need position of police commander in the police department to leave funding at this and not fill the position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next one, please, an FRS update and letter, and I'll turn this over to the city minister.
You may have heard the question, but you're familiar with the eleven of the city planning system. And when I first arrived, and the city informed that I did not qualify as a member of the FRS. And so really, you're saving you some pension from the FRS. And that position was maintained. My retirement is provided as a five, 257, 401K, where it is and a month equal to what Becky was making. So the problem then, it was not a problem until about June of this year, when the FRS came down and said, by the way, since even though your administrator cannot be a member of this organization, and I joined the FRS again, you still have to pay a month equal to about 22% of my salary as well as what you already paying into the 457. And Scott, the mayor, and I've already talked to Senator Wright and to Representative Federall. And I think everybody with Scott's talk, or certainly what I've talked to, simply cannot believe the logic that we are being charged a retirement benefit for somebody who's not eligible to receive retirement benefits. It just follows the line, including Senator Wright and Representative Federall. Scott is, the best one is, Scott said, you know, a senior management position can opt out. And I would be in a senior management position. And he said, yes, that's true, but he cannot opt out because he can't opt in. Anyway, and so what brings this letter is to that document, some of the points that Martin made by Scott and myself, and then the mayor too, Senator represented. But this, if we don't do something, FRS is just going to let it linger and linger until they get tired of fighting. And I don't want to do that. So hence, the letter was drafted, it's for all of our signatures. Senator Wright's office called last week, said that the senator's going back to Tallahassee. I believe this week, he has met once with Department Management Services, which FRS is under Department Management Services. And I told him that we had already, I had this letter prepared to assist him, thought that was correct. So he is working for us and sure Representative Federall will as well. Again, both have the same connection, Rock, because it doesn't make any sense. And then we asked him to point out a law, and I'm not able to do it. It's a, they're pointing out a catch 22, and that's not the law. But Scott had to point out, because by retirement date 2008, it really occurred before Ben Belvin Scott said, well, double dipping. So technically, Scott's been, I could opt in. There's a number hand out there because of my opinion, I'm not out of it.
Do you need a motion to approve this, like, okay, any more? Make a motion to approve those, these letters and the next assignment. Okay, any, anybody wish to comment on this? If not, we do have a motion by Commissioner Bassa and second by Commissioner Franch to approve that. All in favor, say aye. No, no?
Are we calling it the off, the off down there?
Okay, that's a good name. We'll call it the FRS, the off down there. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
We have the office.
Yes, we start with you, and then back to you. Our next topic up is discussion of the water main break on October 8th, 2023.
Mayor and Commissioner, Commissioner Tom has asked the place to sign on the agenda. And certainly circumstances around the water main break. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Administrator. On Monday evening, I emailed the city administrator with my thoughts that is upon your packet this evening. Tuesday morning, I called the city administrator to talk about my email even further. He and I had a conversation that I would still like this brought up in tonight's meeting. Also asked city administrator during that conversation, if I could reach out to Sette Mendoza. So Sette knew the reasons why I was making this item come forward, and I've done that as well too. So for all those criticisms, I'm good. The reason why I brought this up, I didn't criticize Sette, I criticized the city administrator. And because... And because, um, Seth was covered over, it was a perfect storm of events. And what I said in my email, I stand by, just the same. However, it's the administrative responsibility to be sure that this notification system is transferred from the former public works director to the current public director, quite obviously, that did not occur, Seth did not give those texts, and that's why I asked what happened. So it wasn't the right criticism of Seth, regardless, Seth was put in the position he couldn't answer. So now I ask you, um, and this is the, I appreciate your response as a result of that email I sent to you, and you've clearly answered my questions, but the question that still remains is, is now going forward, have we fixed that?
We have, we have fixed it, uh, uh, both biometrics and Seth have been notified of, of these events. Um, there is, there is one change that is important, I mean, he gets the notification, but there's one change that's important. Uh, the phone number that everybody in town seems to have memorized is the, the work phone or direct phone number, uh, which if you had any sort of water situation, you'd call this number to respond, uh, that number is no longer active. We now ask people to call our main number, which is two two eight two one two one, and option seven is on the website. That's gonna take a long time, I think, for people to catch on to, it's a part that's been a mystery, nobody's called it on the thing. Uh, but that would go directly to the cell phone that Seth currently has or any duty water person would have to work. Um, it, it's, uh, it's, it's not in response to Commissioner Thomas's, uh, criticism, I don't need to make it sound like an excuse, but it was interesting, too, to notice that Seth, Seth actually knew of the leak following up on the call of city hall that we received and asking to investigate, uh, and he was investigating for low water pressure at the home with complaint at the CAC, but not at the water tank in well over one, and that's where the alarm was generated, so we were out looking for the leak, or technically, anybody was notified of the leak. But that was.
Go ahead, moment.
Oh, I was gonna say, you did it possibly, okay. Um, and that, but that doesn't happen till the Friday morning either, it just happened clearly earlier, uh, it was four, four thirty in the Friday afternoon, everybody was taking one of the homes, it was on finally, uh, but I think that's either been due. Uh, I am, I am responsible for all the notifications, make sure that don't happen, did not realize that Seth was told to block his phone number from the emergency text, he did, uh, he would not receive it at the head of, you know, and, and that's unfortunate, he doesn't know. So, there obviously was a transmission, um, communication situation that was directed.
Would the central sticks would be for the city to buy the communication device for the department? Because the phone number is the issue, and when that person resigns, that phone stays here, just like the gun that I was setting.
Okay, that's, that's actually the stick number two, you want to think for to say this, because we did ask for that number to be, we could take it home, since everybody was just calling, and, uh, we thought perhaps that would be a nice gift on our part. Uh, but then apparently, it somehow is no longer active, uh, and that is the stick on our, our number one responsibility, so we should not have let that, you're actually right, that, that emergency number, or any number of each cell phone, it's a safe cell phone, it should stay with the city.
Okay, I mean, going forward, more than going forward, uh, is that the protocol we have in place?
Yes, now, okay, as an example, I had, Becky left, I had her phone number, uh, and her cell phone, I do have her phone broke, uh, I had to replace it with the same number, and occasionally I'd call Becky and I'd pick up the phone, but I could get over that.
Yeah, that keeps, that keeps communication going a lot.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, you know, if there's just, if there's a state, I may both, it's my responsibility.
Are we having any issues with the vendors or having to use on a regular basis, not being able to get ahold of us?
Uh, no, vendors, uh, biometrics?
Biometrics or, um, I don't know.
Oh, okay, well, there are, um, no other members that, that public works dealt with, sorry, I don't know, but then it's a transition. Uh, biometrics did very closely with, uh, the city, with, with Ricky, and, uh, we still do. Uh, you know, we entered into two contracts, one for management, one for operations, um, I would have thought, one of those stores would have been involved, I would have thought the, the operation would include the emergency tests, uh, they considered that for the management, but then, now we've got contracts to go. And we're out, and we're asking for agreements to assist us with, we have about two hundred water meters that are not functioning, haven't functioned for perhaps eighteen months, two years, they have those replaced, so those individuals are being charged a minimum bill. Uh, so we have no idea how much water we're actually consuming, but we can rest assured a deal among all of them will bill. That's about one fifth.
Becky, three, the impact, uh, what we have projected as a.
Oh, absolutely.
Is that, are those the new measures that are part of the rigging?
No, they're needed back, like that, Seth is probably way under, they call it two fifteen meters, or two sixteen meters, fifteen seventeen meters. There was a period of time, fifteen, sixteen, when the manufacturer that he deal with had this store, where he, uh, went to a class, the class that was in, we had a core number that was out replaced.
Are there any, are there any of those under warranty?
Uh, they were, and they did take them back at the time, now we have two hundred more, the, it's not a meter we think was malfunctioning, it's the recording device that attached, the automatic recording device attached to the top, when it was analog, usually, if the radio reads in the order, uh, you still have a number you could read. Uh, but you can't do that now, with the new ones.
We want to kind of get a notice out to those residents, is when we do change the reader and it starts correctly calculating, it's gonna be a big shock.
We will have to inspire people, and that is true.
So that way they're prepared, I'm enjoying it.
What's the, uh, what's the, um, process for, uh, replacement of those? I mean, how soon is that gonna be implemented?
I, I believe, we have the meters?
Seth, can you come up, please, and you can do us a little, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, uh, we do have meters, uh, we don't have the three hundred, but we do have three meters on that Seth can replace, or set up in a week, that's a few.
Uh, could, I don't know how soon we can get, uh, the information on how, how quickly can we have all those in place?
Well, that's a staffing problem, because we're a little man, that's, that's one of the reasons I kind of say it's a gossip, because he could help me out with that.
I'm not saying I need the answer tonight.
No, I know, but I'm just kind of like, that's where we're at right now, uh, because if not, we wouldn't put them in right now, because as many as could.
Quick, quick, head to it, you know, city administrator, you seem to have quickly that, John.
And that's the reason I didn't offer us to try to do ourselves, three hundred, that's a, that's a big number, some of the meters are very easy to replace, you could replace them in probably three minutes, sometimes, but that's why I asked for a proposal from Biometrics to send out their crew to do it, so we didn't interfere with the lack of staffing needed.
So this, does meter gonna be changed by Biometrics?
Yes, well, that's my proposal, I've got, or that's my suggestion, I've got a proposal to see how expensive it is.
Problem, then?
Problem.
Okay, so it's a work progress, can you keep it posted?
Sure, absolutely.
How long has this been on the orders? Uh, is this thing on for this tax month?
No, 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 that makes it tapping.
At least, that's what I started, so if the door is pulling.
So this has been on for over almost two years, and nobody said anything else?
I think about that, yeah.
I don't have the technology exactly, but did you know?
Okay, that's the sixth issue, um, I think.
When we get water bills.
Yeah, public water is on, that's.
So, you're bringing it to us now, did you know?
Yes.
So for, prior to that, we had it almost two years, we've known that three hundred homes weren't calculating water proper.
The, the change man notified the public works, that we had three hundred, and, and every quarter we go inside, the electricity would pay, and debts were gonna get out to, get out to it, and it changed.
How did we know the meters were bad? How did you determine it?
They would come up with zero consumption, so they're paid as that capable to the last month.
Okay. And so what, what were people getting charged at a zero consumption?
Seventy-four, twenty-six.
But then? Seventy-four dollars or seven dollars before.
Seventy-four dollars, that's the base fee.
That's a base fee, dude.
They were paying, they don't base fee, so they're.
Yeah, so they pay that, just no consumption.
Right.
People going forward, we need this fixed, but that is a lack of communication on a big part. I mean, they see, the president should understand, when they see they're getting a bill for seventy-four dollars, that their bill is nothing, they have zeros.
Do it.
We calculate that over eighteen months.
Nobody complains about a minimum bill.
But there is record to show that it has been not working. But where, where, where is the situation now, like, staff, I'm sorry, okay, I'm gonna come back with, um, some solutions. Uh, so yeah.
How long have those meters been active?
So, excuse me, can I introduce the rest of the hours?
Thank you.
Dirk, you put out, how long have the meters been sent out there, and then how long have you saw?
They've been up there a few months, not quite sure that I can call, because then maybe not the full off, because it's.
Um, I'll be at, anybody else on? If you can.
It's a weary, um. Uh, so you guys mentioned the number, the two two eight, two one two one, option seven, is that our new emergency?
For water.
Or, 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 or public works. How long has that been on that? That'll be, okay, we have a long time, we have some sort of emergency number, thank you.
Anything else on this? We're just disappointed. Does anyone agree with your disappointment?
I'm just as disappointed as I can be, too. It's, it's just a, okay, we're gonna go forward. And, uh, I, I just have to get my head wrapped around this, I might have something more next month, but not, not now. I gotta get, I gotta get my facts about me before I start spouting my words.
So let's see, right now, we have a lot of issues that we've brought up, now we're gonna be getting texting, we have access to the same information that biometrics we get, just in case.
Oh, uh, the wells, no, I'm, I still have the number locked, I haven't gotten back on.
Okay, so, I thought, I thought it said that you were unlocked.
No, 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 I never, I never got back on it, I, I just had it, I was in totally.
Okay, so good, I don't have the screen cap right now, so, so we're gonna be unlocked, that's gonna be unlocked, and then you'll get notifications while.
Okay.
Okay, that's just so you're aware of what's happening in our city, the system, uh, what was the other thing that I saw on here? Uh, the issue of the meters, that's going to be brought back, and that's where we get started, and you have some help also, please, uh, wait a second. Uh, I wanted to ask something to the city administrator, see if they can follow up, one of the issues that they talked about, um, kind of bore water rumors was, some people were like, well, why do we have an emergency tech for the community? And remember, I mentioned that we used to have code red, and you said that it expired, and then I said, well, obviously, why would it should be complete? Or code red would work with the county, and in the last four years, any state of emergency that has to be accounted for, something like that, we would kind of partner with the county, and they would follow and play it, so I mentioned to you, what about seeing if the city could, you know, get more water emergency, or emergencies like that, through their code red, and our citizens would sign up, like they already, already, some of them already sound, signed up with the county, and then we wouldn't have the thing, so what was the follow-up on that?
The follow-up is, uh, we, Department of Works management, uh, has a contract with code red, as we did, uh, and they said that we could use their system anytime we want, um, we simply have to call the dispatch, not only the dispatch personnel, give them the language we want to have dispatched over code nine, or code red. Uh, the difficulty is, there was a short period of time when, uh, there was what's called the reverse nine one one. And that's when everybody had a landline, and the nine one one system from landline, it could be reversed, and messages go out to those residential units. They don't have, the, the mobile nine one one reversed, I mean, citizens can sign up for it and receive the mobile notifications, but they have to sign up for it. We did not have more than two hundred people sign up for it, it was expensive, it was four hundred dollars a year, I don't, I understand that you would never use it. Uh, maybe it's safe for the, we have no record of ever having used it. So now we have access, given access to the towns, code red, the issue there, it should be to sign up with their code red system at Department of Works Management, um, and adjust the email to the permission, you'd have to do a, 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 a notice or something like that, and you can sign up for the code red through them, and they can transfer that to the sheriff, or the nine one one dispatch center, and you have the same service at most possible period.
So, I mean, you did mention to me that this would be the protocol for sending an emergency notice, who would follow up either the administrator, chief of police, or the mayor, correct? Okay, and they don't have access to that for performance?
Well, they, they wanna know who has access, who has the ability to give them a message, and I suggest yourself, public works, keep it, please, my son.
Right.
And those four people.
We do have a secret. Say your name and address.
Forest, down, end two six one one, from O'Brien. Uh, on the question of the meters, uh, these three hundred meters are, do they not have an optional option to be manually read? Not the new ones. I'm talking about the new, and I'm talking about the ones that are, now that, I shouldn't rephrase that. Um, several years ago, we switched from the conventional meter section, the, the look at this, the read, to the radio, uh, dispatch meters. And those ones and those meters do not have the ability to be manually read, correct? That's the one question, yes.
So, um, thanks for the update on the code red, and Commissioner, are we okay to move forward on this type of content?
I would just, I don't care if we get weekly, or daily, or every other day, updates on this meter issue, uh, because, um, it, clearly you can't send something out of the repo, but you certainly can send information out to all, saying, uh, okay, we need, we need emergency meeting because we got a quote in, we have biometrics due this, or we got a quote in for biometrics, and it's ridiculously high, and so we're gonna do it in the U.S., and this is our, uh, scope and schedule on how it's gonna take to do the job, but if you can keep us updated, even every other day, that would be nice.
Is there a plan to have a bag of these meters on hand?
We do keep meters on hand, I think technically, I mean, they do fail occasionally for various reasons, so we always take supplies over there, place immediately, but the number three hundred, and maybe, I don't know why we didn't have three hundred on hand, and, and solve the problem two years ago, or eighteen months ago, but we didn't, uh, but we do need to do that.
Is there, I mean, this, is this black box in suit, uh, because of that, I mean, I understand ten or twenty meters going out, but three hundred out of, how many did we order? I think, like, separate, probably twenty-four.
Well, they all did go out at one time, the stipend was over, whatever length of time it was.
Yeah, what?
It's just, I don't care how often they run out, if they don't know.
Uh, the meters, they have data for there, so, like, for two thousand fifteen, so we'll be calling fifteen, sixteen, and so forth. Uh, the bit fees are pretty much, are the ones that we had the biggest problem with, uh, because, uh, the wire, there was, uh, either moisture or water was getting into, so you were unable to read those, and since they're digitally, some, some of them, you can't read them. And all, even after you can do the profile, maybe, maybe not all the time, maybe get, get read off of it, and register all the information on them. So, as long as it's going on, every time we read some. So as long as it's going on, every time we read some, you'll have a couple more popping up as, as we read, so... And then usually the fifteens and sixteens right now are usually the ones that were, had a problem, and then occasional fifteens and nineties. Not too many of those, but maybe fifteens, sixteens are the ones that have the big problem.
And are there other replacements? What's a warranty line condition, or are they replacing them? All the two thousand fifteen costs free, I mean, uh, I mean...
Uh, my understanding is that we're supposed to take them out and then we're supposed to basically get them all ready and they're supposed to take them out. We still have a few there that they haven't picked up, or we're supposed to take, not quite sure what was going on there. So, and then we're gonna give us meters to replace, so it's...
Well, you see what we've done with this line questioning, and, uh, you know, let's just come up with it, take a few days to figure out what's going on. See if you can get us forward for it.
Do I sign up for anything?
No, I have to go to Commissioner Ambassador's Simmons, that's why I'm on the way, to get my facts, get the facts together before I start spouting out. But I'll probably will stop after.
I agree, I will echo Tricia Arnold's statement. And Tricia, what do you think?
I know we have a problem with the water, so something, I know they're working on it, so they can do it, it's working.
Okay, thank you, I think. Do you have one question, um? There was a gentleman that, uh, that we met who had an extraordinary water bill for just, I think it was his first full bill, and he came up with six thousand something, and if you'd like to hear it.
Let me, uh, if, I don't mean to change the subject, but this will change the subject a little bit. Uh, there is a resident, the bill was a random resident, uh, who received a bill for just about a million gallons of water a quarter. To best my knowledge, he never complained with us or anybody else investigating. And what we did, he was leaking water at the rate of five hundred gallons per month, or two months, or a few months. The, he didn't do the water bill. And, uh, and then he, for some reason, he contacted the Delatona City Council lady, who called me, who told me about the water bill. And at that point, we've almost maintained a philosophy or a position within the water department that, um, you have to pay the water bill a matter of what, if you have a leak. And that was based on, um, the legality that we have a position in a clause with a state revolving fund that citizens will have, will give away military services. And that's a very standard clause utility, whoever's going to the market wants to make sure you have the weapons, uh, to pay the money back. And they don't want you for whatever, um, great reasons, you know, to be writing free water into your home properties, to nonprofits, to churches, a lot of people like to have free utilities. And this prohibition has its place in saying you cannot do that. Uh, but I've never seen that prohibition interfere with adjustments to people who have obvious leaks and been considering one. Uh, and this, uh, I had, I think, just two examples of what you could do, example. And one I'm familiar with, one I just came up this time. Uh, one is, uh, you have a leak, you get a plumber, he picks the leak, he gives evidence of, of them fixing the leak, then you pay the average of, in our case, the previous three quarters, uh, and you're back where you started. Uh, another suggestion would be, you get a plumber, you pay the leak, and then you pay, uh, basically a fine of ten times the average of monthly amount and your previous leak. Uh, in the case of, of that second suggestion, uh, that gentleman would have paid something like eight hundred dollars as opposed to six thousand, uh, tremendous breaks. The one, the first one, I worked with very well, I thought it was very fair of him. You know, again, you're gonna be paying the plumber, probably a lot more than you thought you would pay the plumber, uh, and get the leak fixed, then bring that receipt, and we will average out your consumption for the previous three quarters. That worked very well, I would, I would think we need some relief for people who, you know, honestly don't know they have a leak until they go water bill. They could have it for three months and a half. Uh, and that's in their old system, we have a very old system, you know, that's not a top. Uh, and it just seems like we're being, uh, not being as, humane as you could be, uh, in lack of jurisdiction. So, that's something that you would like to consider, take up this evening, that's fine. This gentleman, I know, he'd think the world of it, and probably certainly so. But it is a tremendous burden on people to pay water bills, and it's, six thousand's an exception. But we've had water bills that have been five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars, simply because of the leak, they didn't know it.
So, um, so you're asking us to, you're gonna consider the motion for that particular client, or are you asking for a specific policy for the future?
If we did, uh, I would rather do it on an individual basis.
Okay.
On a one-time basis?
Yeah.
On a one-time basis, but I...
I don't mind, I'm using the same phone call every time.
Yeah.
Okay, but I, but I would rather do it on an individual basis.
So what is your recommendation?
Well, look, I would, I would ask that you grant relief to the certificate that you've been doing, but then let us come back at some future time with a policy that we can all discuss. Uh, and I could give you their examples, and however, actual statistics, I'm happy to get things like that. Uh, and you may wanna consider it right now, but in the meantime, I get this stuff and we can read.
And his, um, his leak must exist.
I'm sorry?
He did have a leak, thanks. He was under the process.
I'm sorry, yeah, so I don't, I don't have a problem with a penalty, I have a problem with like ten times penalty, you know, but because just the average really just is, is, isn't really saying, you know, you have some ownership in this, pay attention. Okay, and, uh, if it was, if it was a gas pump, it would be much more serious than this water. But if you still have that responsibility, there should, should be some bond associated with it. Uh, because they're getting major leak in the beginning. Uh, so I would think, you know, the two times the average, uh, and then the bill is extended to be seven-five, five-fifty, nine-six, seven-hundred. So it's, it's still relief, but it still says you have some responsibility. Well, what if they brought it back to a former statement and you, it's charged two times the previous average for over three quarters? In other words, my suggestion, lower it to ten, number two.
Yes, exactly, that, that's what I'm saying, that ten seems to be, uh, I mean, for most cases, I think we might be able to employ it. Now, now they have to, has to break all the spell, this was his first bill, so we don't... Okay.
Well, we know he would lower it to eighty-seven-four, something like that.
Why don't you just, my suggestion would be, we can give the flip side of this, is we don't charge you back proper water that needs to be properly. Once it goes to the, the water goes to property, property responsible for it, that's their system, not the city's. It's their system. So that's probably the logic behind, you get the water to the property line, if there's a problem with that, you're not responsible for it. Once it gets to the property line, which is the property line to your, your, that's your responsibility to maintain it. This is an extreme case. Um, and one suggestion I have, believe, there's a way to figure out, what is the cost of this? We know it would charge, but is there a cost to the city, uh, water? Maybe you take your water budget, how much you spend on your water department, divide that by the number of gallons you use per year, and say, that's what our system costs, we at least need to recover our...
Well, that'd be a good exercise, just to know what a gallon of water costs. Well, theoretically, your, your water rate should be predicated on just those exact factors, yeah. Now, I don't know, when we did the last rate study, obviously, I'm not sure, or who did it, but a professional study would denote, take those exact things and public interest, the way they did it.
By my election, we did our rates, the local rates. You know, you can have a small base rate and then higher usage rate, but I think you all have a high base rate, a smaller usage rate, but then probably look at that. But I would suggest, since this person is a new customer, you don't know what his usage is, if you're going to basically leave on average, then let's see what his average is, and we'll come back and retroactively, um, suggest that...
Make a good...
Because he's, he paid us, I mean, if he couldn't pay it and we were shutting it off, that would make different situations, so... And hopefully he can wait.
You still have, they have been working during the...
What's that?
Yeah, we're like, yeah.
Oh, uh, just, let's see what his usage is and then come back to you and say, this is what his usage is as a new customer, and this is what he pays, or this would be the adjustment. I believe that would come up with a good policy on what that is. Um, and what that's, and I think because the guy paid it, I assume we can come back in a month or whatever, a period of time, and do the adjustment, retroactive. We want to shut off his water, I think, probably.
Thank you.
Doctor, Mr. Three-Fifteen, maybe? I just wanna point out, it's the nation that I was in, uh, when you consider giving this guy a break, which I think you should, you should take into consideration when you give yourself a break on that two hundred thousand gallon loss, if you're incurred, how it would get it happen. That's all.
Thank you. Could you save me a minute?
Alex, seven-nine-two-one-three, man. This is what we're talking about, so we make a big buck to respond to what you... I've been involved with, I don't have an leash in a different situation. And I think the way that has to be taken care of and worked out, to take the responsibility away from the city, okay? I've had people call me problems and everything else, and what we used to do is turn around and you would go down there, check. Now, if the water meter's here, then the town checks at the seat, it, there's a very easy way to check it. Now, if it's not leaking here at the meter, and it's on the other side of the meter, and then people understand, in the case that I think, or probably most of them, as soon as we explain to them, look, there's no leak here at the meter. It's after here, your problem is in your front door, you got a broken line, or whatever it is. That's a big thing, I think, that the city absolutely can make sure. Now, a big problem, which you know, yeah, fine, a lot of people don't complain to the city. Don't complain to the neighbors and everybody else, but they don't complain to the city. So if they can't complain to the city, it should be checked out immediately, to see if the leak is before or after the meter, and that cleans everything up, and you don't go on the thing.
Thank you.
We actually do that routine with them, executive assistants, I didn't realize that. Uh, what we do, we do any kind of complaints of, of water usage that seems unusual, we go down, since they use the term profile, uh, we profile a meter, and the ones that are working will tell you exactly what your water usage is literally by the minute, uh, throughout the entire period. And in this particular case, the gentleman, it stayed right at five hundred gallons per hour, there was very little usage of...
It was on his side, I mean...
It was on his side for me, but it was unfortunately, during the whole of the rain, so, rain and...
Yeah, but there, typically you would see it from like your products, and your bath, and, you know, your dishes. But no, this was just, it was so high, there were very little clips of her...
I mean, it's not really a big question, but I would see not, you know, five hundred gallons, no.
They said, how is it going now, schools taking it?
Yeah, I mean, where was it, where's he been late, he got three days.
Exactly. So, it's my thoughts, I'm just not going anywhere, I mean...
You're wondering like, Kelly, go tell it back to us.
So I just wanna make sure, Mr. City Administrator, do you have some direction with that particular client, Frank?
Uh, not really.
No?
Well, and I like, I like the mission, I have a suggestion, and he gets it fixed, which he did already, he gets a plumber's bill with proof, uh, and we would do a profile just for a lot of information. But then two times the, the prospective use over the next three quarters, after that, we'll give...
So you want to, is that, is that an action, or is that, uh...
We'll bring it back.
That's, that's the first thing, we can bring it back, okay, so, okay.
I gotta have, with just one last question on this whole boil water thing. All I heard was that the truck was responsible for damaging the line that created the leak. Does anybody, I thought I'd read that someplace in the email.
I think it was left, like, trees down there.
Maybe I made it up. What caused the problem?
Like, lightning, all the trees, there's a tree here and a tree, trees are the biggest conductor of lightning.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
If you looked at the roots, I went down, if you looked at all the roots in that area, without lightning, hit those trees, boom. It doesn't come, that thing, that people's, that's, down, I like four people, four or five feet, feet. And the roots from the trees, they looked at, but right down by the water.
But Dr. Kupi, the scientist, is the one that's...
Well...
No, plenty of water veins can fix it.
Not just that, I might add, Almanique actually fell into a hole created by the roots exploding around the pipe, actually, so...
So that was an active guy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, literally up to her waist.
It wasn't that far down. Okay, so we're forward to our, the last set of one, section five, the session concerning the slight contract we there are facing. I'll turn this over to the city administration.
Uh, and the mayor members of the, of the commission, you call, uh, we had a brief discussion in the last meeting on Thursday. Uh, in the meantime, um, Carol has gone on vacation, and I knew David was there today, uh, and she gave you the copy, actually, she sent the floor with the copy back. And I think the way that I suggested, I think she, somewhat mirrors the same opinion, uh, we are in sync on the recommendation. I would ask that we develop a new agreement, since residents scratch through other ones, and just come up with a new agreement. Uh, but basically, she would be a consultant to the city, uh, she would handle, uh, certain, uh, review jobs, maybe recommendations to the H P D. Uh, and we would do the administration, handle it, and do the inspections in the field after the reviews have taken place, which will be somewhat of a workload, but at this point, uh, I think it's probably the best option. She will be vacating the office at the end of this month. And I think it would be more favorable to the citizens of her role in the organization and what she can possibly say. So I think, I don't know if she'll hear, I think...
If she's there. So did she saw, or anything?
She can agree with my comments, but if she is, I think we could be forward with addressing, uh, those comments in the agreement that is back in progress.
Thank you. Who's that? Kelly, right? The little Mary on here, the right friend. And I have a chance to review, and, uh, what Mr. Redd was saying, that these points are, how do you feel about what points that we draw?
Um, I'm unclear by the instant email in terms of, um, exactly what he was asking, which is why I asked for a concise list. Because, um, what I told him was, is that the job I have been doing, I don't want to do all of that, for lots of reasons. Um, especially the policing and some of the other aspects, it's not, it's not what I do. I'm a designer, I'm, I'm a solution fighter, you know, so that, that's not a piece that I would continue the job I started. I'm a metamorphosis, did a whole bunch of things. Um, so I'm a full, the rain's back, I have other projects I'm trying to get done, so I don't have the time to devote to this thing as much as I have been devoted. My contract was three years, I fulfilled it despite the fact that I could not take extra work because of the workload on the city, so I have to change that. Um, so I asked for, and we sat in September, and I thought we had to be understanding. And then every time I got an email back or, or whatever, I would get a different answer. So I just need something very clear, very concise, exactly what's expected, um, before I even get the answer. And, um, you know, if you feel like you need to bid out, please do, I'm not, I'm not suspended by that.
Yes, please, second.
Erin, are we close?
I, I couldn't understand what they were doing.
Okay.
I mean, like, it was vague, it was multiple questions.
Erin, are you referring to, you know, the family wrote about seven hours ago that video, today?
Um, what I said to what he said.
The one that he said?
I'm referring to... I'm referring to that, yes.
Okay. So, let's see. He put in here, for everyone, I think he said this to the commission, we charge $175, $175 for all applicants to receive HPP approval, okay, wait a store, and in new home construction, we charge $500 for Ariel's time. In the future, I would, I would recommend not referring builders to Ariel, the staff will proceed the application, transmit it into Ariel, Ariel needs to communicate with the builder, she may do so, but keep track of her time as she does not. Is that okay?
Well, okay. What you said is okay, but it doesn't define what role you're asking me to fulfill.
Oh, let's go on, let's see if it, I'm just trying to figure out where your, you drove. Gateway Project, we would recommend dropping the need for citizens and builders to attend HPP, fences, roofs, pools, et cetera, if the design material are in pattern. That's not really Ariel's contract, it's just a scope of review issue, which would probably take a, I think it might take a mortgage change to come back as a policy if the commission wants to go. All construction in historic district would go to Ariel and the HPP, except for the light. With the arrangement, I would recommend lowering the fee for Gateway Projects for minor works, such as listed to the agreed upon fee for one hour for Ariel or a staff to consult with her. Gateway would not be charged the fee for HPP at the time. I would also lower the application fee from $150 to $175, and Ariel, lower her fee from $500 to $300. And I think it also talked about, the city will prepare the agenda, use the recommendations, I guess they'll submit the application to you, you will then give the recommendation back to the city, they will prepare the agenda, the city will process recommendations up to the city commission and process approvals, commission, during actual construction, the city will inspect construction for adherence to the approvals, they may request your assistance if there is some confusion over what was approved. Is that okay? They're going to submit the application to you, and you prepare a recommendation, and they will handle the agenda, and then you will go to the historic board meeting, to this commission meeting, when your, those items come up for recommendation.
Well, one, one of the things we discussed, and I don't want to give you the minutia, it's a waste of time, was the, the items, you know, a re-group, there's a lot of things that are relatively simple, so.
That might be what.
I think it's what you pay me to look at though, is this kind of a waste of city money, and, and my time, so, to be frank, but.
Would that be the things that we talked about, where, um, business, roofs, pools, those type of things would not have to go through the full review process, maybe.
Well, I'm saying they wouldn't need to go through form, they wouldn't need to, I wouldn't need to review them, in my opinion, I don't need to review them.
That would be kind of a, who cares? That's the worst.
Or going to the historic board.
No, it would not be a historic board.
Well, I know that's what you're saying, but that, the source.
It's not a change toward it, yes.
Currently, we already said that it has to go to the source. So, I'm saying that that is not something that I think the city needs to pay me to review.
The re-grouped fences.
That, that what I consider to be minor.
Can you share a list of things that you consider minor?
And I have, and I've already submitted that, and I submitted it to them.
Okay, okay, so that's not in your email you submitted?
I submitted it in September 28th, to the city and the city.
Okay, can you, can you send it in your email, I have a lot of things that you think shouldn't be where you're.
Shouldn't push it.
Sure. Okay, you have a filter, that should not be part of the review, sort of like, we're talking about, like, things that, you're saying these minor things should.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to delineate the administrative section of what I do.
Right. That's what I'm trying to facilitate, is what you're talking about. So you would, let me know what it is, you think you should not, that you should not pay to do, because it is so, my, that the city should be paying for, right? That's what you're saying, there's some small things that really the city should be paying you to review, right?
I'm saying that the historic board can handle it, one of the things I've done in the past three years is training them.
Right.
And not that we will teach them those things.
Oh, Mr. Reddick, I'm out, I'm just trying to say that we may not need to change the orders, those issues would still.
I understand that, I just want her, I want a list of things that you think the city should not send to you, and pay you to review, and they should be able to sell it, they're small things, that don't need to address, right?
But what I would like, is I would like to hear from the commission, what they would like you to do, and what, because see, it's very important.
May I?
Yeah, definitely, I'll give it something. Okay, one second, let's see if we can reach it, then we can talk. You have something?
The only bank or branch that has good performance is the 2018 contract, about any information on any new proposed contract or something like that.
That's, that's really what we're talking about, is the proposed, the one from 2018, it's a two years, and extended for one year, and now it's under October 11th, so now we're talking about where do we go, and how do we go forward from there. Ariel says she does not want to participate in these administrative functions, and, you know, we can take those over, we can take over the inspection services, the, I know the HPP, we're very much liking that, the recommendations, applications, who would send those to her, she can back the recommendation, come to the meeting, discuss our positions, your perspective on comments, and that's it. It, it, it doesn't kind of keep up with you.
I think this is another one of those issues, that instead of dragging out contract negotiations at a city commission meeting, we should have had a workshop, and been able to set up a table, work on all this different stuff, to get it out there, and bring back to a regular meeting.
We'll, we'll have it, if you, what Ariel said, we'll have it back in November.
And that's a good one, Commissioner Frasca.
So, you know.
Commissioner Frasca?
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't know whether this is a simple solution or not, but first of all, I'm assuming the majority of the commission has been happy with Ariel's work, and I'm assuming that the HPP has been happy with Ariel's work. It seems like Ariel would like to change the scope for somewhat, and I think the historic board, the board probably has a better idea, maybe for the switch she does for the city than anybody else. My advice would be for Ariel to sit with the HPP, go over what she would like to do, what she wouldn't like to do, and because Mark was a mayor at one point, he understands the role of administrator, et cetera, et cetera, and then put that suggestion into the hands of the administration, and say, does this work for you this time? And, and, and I think now we got the players that know most about what she's doing involved in creating a proposal to us. If we look at it, and the administrator looks at it and says, you know what, this is what we're making work on, we need to just put this out to bid, and I would suggest continuing to do some form of what we're doing until we find out what the business, or if they look at it and say, yeah, we can do this, this, this. My only concern about this whole thing is who's going to do the inspections? Okay, because I see a disconnect coming from the design person to the person who goes out to make sure that that is done according to plan. Not that it isn't done all the time, but there may be some training involved, and that may need to be discussed, but if we can do that, then I think we can bring something back to the mission, we can go on.
Who is the person that's sending it back?
We'll, we'll need to find somebody, now, Ariel did take out Dominique, Dominique's done, she wants to sit there by herself, and I'm sure she knows the, the where we're going to do it, the contract, and, you know, the meter from the plans. I did talk to Mark, though, with a length about just exactly the second question, and the HPP is happy with the services, I did alter, we could take the administrative stuff over, that's not an issue. And I, that's why I asked Ariel to propose, because frankly, from based on my discussion with Mark, I thought we were very close in her email. But, you know, again, we can come up with something for November meeting in the test, but I think we're not to be super concerned.
What was next?
Uh, yeah, today we all received an email from Ariel that went out to city staff in September 28th. So this conversation started about a month ago, a little bit more in earnest, and apparently, Ariel, with all due respect, you did the copy of the city attorney.
Oh.
And so, and city attorney, I just forwarded you a copy of that email, so you can review the various services in which she says she has been providing, and services in which she said she couldn't provide. I think it's all very important for us to realize, too, that the historic reservation board is not broken at all, they're doing a great, great job. We have created a unintended consequence, so to speak, and that this space's work or product is the Woods of Lake Helen, saying what we want. I had some, some guests two weekends ago from another community, unfamiliar with, with Lake Helen completely, we drove to the golf cart through the woods, and they just couldn't, couldn't get over how much more of those homes were so different from each other, and yet I knew from sitting up here and working with Ariel and the HPP, a lot of the homes look the same inside, but not the same on the outside. That's this space's product of her work, service, it was really cool to have someone totally unfamiliar with Lake Helen, totally unfamiliar with the community, look at the woods and go, wow, what a killer place. So let's be sure that we know the HPP is not broken, and, and then perhaps as a result of this email, that might help, help you guys go forward to create a working relationship. I question the same thing as Commissioner Frasca, who inspects? We already have staffing issues, I'm afraid, so, you know, we, the city administrator and I had a side comment a while, a few days ago, about the difference between Ponson and Lake Helen, population's 500 people difference, we're smaller by 500 people, their mileage rate's smaller than ours, but with Ponson, their mileage revenue for 21, 22 is 5.6 million alone, it's just ad loring. Our ad loring income for the same period of time is $850,000, and yet we only have 500 people less, and so, you know, it's a staffing issue, and you are slammed. I think pretty much everybody downstairs is slammed, I know the city administrator is slammed. Some of us, what we're discussing here is a result of staff. And to add more to a deputy clerk that involved, I respect, Dominique, you have a lot of construction experience, design experience?
No.
And that's not who we need to go inspect these properties. She's been doing the inspections post-design. Hey, you didn't, you didn't move this column, it's coming back to the commission, hey, you didn't change these windows out, like, I asked you, it's going to come back to the commission. That's the stuff that's important to the landowners out in the woods as well, too, maintaining these activities, maintain these activities for us. You know, I have never ever had a reason not to trust anything that Ariel says. I have not been proved in that yet, and I'm not being proved that now. And I would, I would, I would have, with all due respect, city administrator, I would, and city attorney, I would have more confidence in what Ariel is suggesting that we pay for, than what we would suggest that she paid, we paid for. Frankly, and I know you guys run the city up here with our management, I don't have that expertise, I, 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 I think I can make decisions, sometimes I make good ones or bad ones, it's my job, but I will trust more from what Ariel tells us that we need to pay her for, and what we need to do, more than from you guys.
That's what I was asking.
I know, Scott.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Thank you so much, I, I got that part, too. So anyway, but I make it record, because I'm the commissioner. Thank you. So, that's where I am on this. So I, I, you know, I, I, I want to, I want to keep you, but I want to pay you by the hour, yeah, but I don't know how we're going to do that just yet.
I know that it might be a joint, and you've talked about your inspector multiple times, that we currently, the one we currently use, just not look at these at all, who's on the job site way more than I am, in fact, there are some builders that only can call me over, because they know I'm going to find something, that's not a role I like, I'm not a policeman, I don't like that role, so that's not a role I want to continue, but we have probably a different inspector that might take a whole role. It might be a private one, that you, you know, they, I'm sure they exist, we've had similar ones in the past, that might be something to look at, something you do not really afford to go, you'll look at, the codes, the land development code also, which includes the COA compliance.
And ultimately, Scott Simpson, our city attorney, is right, we've got to make this legal, and make it work for future commissions and future building, that's what he's looking at, and I understand that, and thank you, Scott. And, and, but same, you know, but there's got to be a path, there's got to be a proper path.
There, you put that on my mind, which is, I know I felt the same thing, and there is, there's somebody who inspects a building for CEO.
That's true.
That's true. So we know somebody's wanting to do an inspection, so if there is somebody doing it, how much would it cost to expand that scope of work? Would they be willing to expand their scope of work beyond affordability to these certificate appropriators or something?
And that's, that's the first place to look, you know, to, to, to fill that need, fill that staff need that you want, but I still, I still believe, I, I, I think if, if the historic board, and Ariel can put together a proposal of what she would like to do, okay, that way we know what else we need to do, then we can figure out how we outsource that available.
Well, having said that, we do have a couple of speakers here.
I was just going to say, I think she's made it very clear that, that's not a role to us, to any.
Yes.
So, with that, with that being said, that option is no longer available.
What's happening with options?
Of her going up to do the inspections.
Ariel does, she does. She's saying that's what she wants.
Yeah. And I don't want to be transitional, because I understand there needs to be, right? Training is necessary, even when the agenda is, training is necessary. Am I mistaken, that you don't want, I thought you don't want to do the inspection?
She doesn't, but she's, what she's saying.
I don't, but I want to train someone, okay, so that's what I was, was thinking, but going forward with, we do have somebody up, that that is something to explore, to see where we can go with that, expanding that role of the inspector.
I'll give a couple of speakers, I will do have a secret card with Chris Williams, if you can come up. Is that going to get to the phone?
No, no, I thought. Chris Williams, it's up at Park Garden Street, up here in Lake Helen. Let me start with the issue of Ariel, I think you guys were recognized for role and critical ness of her role. We started this whole process seven years ago with, listen, our architectural stock was, we've got a process, we've got a category, we have homes that are two to three times more expensive or valuable than what you have in the world today, which I can tell you, that means such a huge property value. That intangibility, I think you mentioned that in regards to, it's the details, the details, and learn that lesson from Ariel in terms of the zonally issues, and exterior trim rewards, and size of the trim, and all those little items are greater than some parts, and you can't look at a house, and say, that's really beautiful, but it's a trend I would look at, and see, the reason that exists is because this floor is this big, that room is this big, the massive is done properly, and that's a very unique skill, that's one that's taken six years to kind of work out. So having her, or someone with her skillset, is absolutely more than the expert thing we guys need to ensure, because we would be more at, that she had accepted any problems. I, I do have a bit of concerns about who does the inspections, the thing that she brings to the table, and she can speak construction language, and she can speak design language, she's, that, that stuff kind of reverates in her head. Whoever's going to do that needs to have that skillset, and you would disrespect anybody for school, I don't, I don't really resonate with anybody that has to have that skill. So I, I, that's, that is a critical issue to address. Last thing I would say is, and on that point, we had a workshop in July or August, last year, that point was brought up, is an issue that needed to be addressed, since, you know, here we are, we got to, or I'm so sorry, I could rest. Lastly, the proposal about taking fences and roofs out of HPP to simply re-bones, have a staff, I would strongly disagree with that issue. I, I think it's a fine point that it does. I think it's a fine point that it does necessarily to Ariel. If there's questions that may come up while we're at the meeting, she can be there, whoever else might be wanting to be there, but she'll be there for them to answer those questions that would save our time and increase the sense of building for some of those issues. But the issue of the roof in terms of architectural detail and the effect it has on value of the house is critical. And that, and I think our ordinance is still going to have to go through H P B. So eight seconds.
I agree with you on that. About the works in place, I think they still need to be good for.
Chris, would you and H P B mind working with Ariel and put a proposal together for the city?
I think, from what I've heard, my conversation with Ariel and Scott, I think they're pretty darn close.
Okay.
And that did it. Throw in our two cents where if they're generally small, probably be just a simple time to do that.
Okay.
I think it's kind of given that great design issue in the back, that what we just wanted was who's going to do those inspections. And that, yeah, that's the most appropriate.
And just to give you a context, too, Mr. Williams, the commission that the way it is well, I just can't say it by myself, but you're still chair of H P B, definitely, till tomorrow. So if you need more than three minutes to describe and tell us a little bit more about what's happened with H P B and what's going on with Ariel, I would, for one, like to hear more about it if that's the pleasure of the commission as well, too. So I would hope that we would have you limited by three minutes since you're a chair of a city committee.
I appreciate that, I'm actually, I don't want to have things to say about your passion that one, I don't have things to say. Guy, I want to address the whole importance of her role in how it impacts the product and the neighborhood, I just may not be able to say. I'm going to address the issues of what H P B does, do they do? Yeah, I, beyond that, have any personal experience to really go over some of that?
Thanks, sir.
I appreciate the service that you provided to all of us in our community.
I just want to bring in one other thing. I've heard people talk about, about the fee, just for him, when he does regularly hire architects, they're not cheap, and that's what we talk about, the skill sets that are in that agreement. I know she's not licensed architect, but she has all the skill sets that come to work, many of the ones I dealt with. And just for one reference, in 2006, I did 1600 square foot of model, and the architect's price to do the plans and specs and view the project was $14,000, and that was 15 years ago. So if we're talking about replacing her with a credentialed architect, it's not only cheap.
I guess the one thing I would say is, where we come from, where we come from the litigation with the woods several years ago in terms of our historical architecture to where we are today, we are lightyears ahead of where we are. I mean, just lightyears, and a lot of that has to do with her. And so this is, for myself as your attorney, you won't hear me recommending getting rid of Ariel or someone like her, because if you are going to have architectural standards, you better have someone like that on board, or you're going to get sued again. And we are lightyears ahead of where we were before. Remember before, we had a description, we said, bungalows. No pictures, nothing, and that's what led to a lot of arch speak that we had. And we are so far ahead of that pattern book, and we just need to keep going that same way. So I can only speak for myself. I want to know what Ariel wants to do. We can't force her to do something she doesn't want to do. So what is it you want to do? Let's narrow that down and see if that fits the needs of what this is going to be.
That's what I'm.
And if it does, great. If you want more than what she's wanting to do now, then you're going to have to look at alternatives. But my suggestion will always be, you need someone like Ariel advising historic board in this commission if you want to have historical architectural restrictions and guidelines that people have to comply with. Otherwise, we're going to go back to this arbitrary process of the leasing litigation, and we're going to be closed up.
And that leads me to the next question, into the pattern book. You know, that plan that started with the conversation with Jason Yarborough and Becky Whitty, or Ambassador issue, you know, it was so hard to build here in Lake Helen. What was due, what was that? And you know, this whole thing with the three descriptions of three different people inputting for one house, got us in trouble with Jason and all that. So we got past all that. The result of the pattern of that ambassador conversation with the first plan book, just, you know, a few homes and some pictures that they could put together all by herself, and then it turned into a pattern book when Ariel came on board. It took Ariel a little over a year and a half to get that done. I was a little impatient over, you know, looking for, looking for, because I knew it was going to be great for the wood. So now, I know there's some discussions going on about intellectual property back and forth, and all this pattern book, the plan book, and remuneration to Ariel since it's copyrighted by her, a lot of that, 99.9% of that work is hers. So what's that discussion like? What is that? I mean, I'm at a loss.
I had a discussion with Ariel, a couple of months ago, I saw an email from Lee mentioning that to me, that that was an issue. So I said, well, it does create a question. From my understanding, she copyrighted it. I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
I said, well, what is our contract, sir? You know, can submit a contract, let me take a look at it. Contract's clear, we own it. It's ours. That's crystal clear.
Was that in the supplemental contract? It's not in the primary contract of the city.
But the primary contract.
Reference that contract. I didn't split my life, I just wanted to be sure in my mind.
Yeah, it's sort of, and it's also, if we didn't have that, we would have the issue that this is a public record. Yeah. That creates, that's another element to this, is that this is a public record, it is created in the public.
Do you think in going forward in the agreement, that we're going to be able to work that out?
You know, I don't know what Ariel's position is on, so I would hope so. And honestly, had I not heard she copyrighted it, I don't think it would have been an issue. I don't know the commission's position on her ability to use this book into the future. You may not care if she uses it as part of her resume or something she wants to use. I don't think it would become an issue, but what she copyrighted, if that's what she did, that's a certain ownership interest in it that precludes us from using it in a way that satisfies the public record fund. So those issues need to be resolved.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, may we ask Ariel if she can come back up here?
Please, Ariel, do me some, one, do you have something?
And a sidebar to the supplemental conversation.
Oh, excuse me. What is this?
This year doesn't appear. Well, this one does. Can I finish or? In our permit website, on the website, you go into the permit, and you go down and come through, and it says it's got the style either of the historical one or the community building design, one of the two. You click on it, it goes to the publication website, you amplify the book. Who gets the money? And according to that funding, it's unreleased books by Ariel Faith, which is one who created the book. But who gets the, like, for the one, almost $22,000, you know, to take you on, who gets that money?
Well, Ariel, I talked about that briefly, of some amount of it. What she tells me is, the check is made out to her, but she, we don't make any of the stock, and she doesn't make any of the stock. She accumulates those, and eventually will ask for a credit to do some, and, you know, if there's a dollar left over, it's probably all there is, and she pays the printer, but a dollar wasn't enough to worry about.
That's not clear information.
What I was trying to do, I was a little outside of, oh, actually, yeah.
That's not clear.
Yeah, I think I hear the permit section, because a lot of people say, why do I need to buy that book, and all I want to do is see what my house is going to be? Now, being that we have a mayor, and they can have access to it. So the only way you can get free access is you've got to realize that if you go through the codes and ordinance side of it, you can look at it for free.
Well, because of the discussion Scott was gave, we had listed that book on the website. You can download it for nothing, in print if you'd like. It's available to anybody, just for that process. So you don't have to buy, sort of think of me to finish the website.
I tried it everywhere, everywhere I went on her, that book, the only place I could access that book was on the ordinance side of it.
I agree.
A lot of citizens don't know that. They're looking at the permit side. There should be a reference that says, you know, your citizen, like, you know, looking at the sign, it's actually a call, or something like that, so they don't have to pay for it.
You need a website, too.
Absolutely.
That was that one that they were buying, back in, so I know she must have linked it to you. Just for, can I clarify?
Yeah, I wanted you to clarify that issue.
Okay. When we originally did the contract for the pattern book, which is not in the, that is not the contract that's in this general package, me and, you know, me and Becky have an understanding. If you notice on page three of the pattern book, it is copyrighted to the city of Lake Helen and Ariel Faith. Now, I'm a lawyer. I don't understand, I can make my way through a lot of legal junk, because I've done it before, and I will do it again. But I don't know what he's referring to in the standard contract. I know that was added after me and Becky agreed on the actual proposal, which is what was submitted to you. I was not at that meeting, this was not discussed. But this was brought up a year ago to the commission. I just found earlier today, one of Becky's weekly newsletter reports she had put together. This item was literally brought to you a year ago, and it was given to the city administrator, and the issue was never, was not an issue then. So I'm just curious why it's an issue now. But here's how it works. Flor is a printing company. It is a self-publishing printing company. I was looking for the way the city to print the books once they were done. They also use PDFs. 99% of the money goes to them. You pay them. If there's any money that we need. Me and Becky got an arrangement where I have a city code, which he could get him at cost, so that the city didn't have any extra expense other than what it costs to print, because it costs to print, the higher quality paper, and the more it costs to print, et cetera. So that was just the way we worked all those little details out in that original agreement for in that process. Because, you know, developing a book and making it something that you guys can use as PDF was my deliverable. And that is what I gave you over a year and a half ago. So that is that the city has the right to do whatever they want, though. They can print for the different company. It's a printable PDF. They, Flor was just the one I used, because it was an easy one for us to move forward with. So I do not get paid from, when people buy a book, they do not pay me, they pay the printer. It's like a, but I think you understand what I said, kind of.
So when someone buys the book, they pay the printing company $42?
If they buy a physical copy.
If you buy it.
They can also, they could buy the PDF if they want, but they can also download it for free. So in reality, nobody wants to buy the book, so it's kind of irrelevant, so.
In reality, nobody really buys a book?
No, not really.
How many books have you sold?
Other than the initial bunch the city bought, they got it at that discount, I think probably four.
I need to quantify that, so thank you. When you say how many books, how many, which might be different for somebody else, you know, I'm not. So, and I was under the impression that this is my fault for not following up with prior administrator. I thought we had printed a boatload of copies that we were just giving away to people here.
You thought you knew what?
I thought we had printed a boatload of copies to have on hand.
I think you had 50 each, 50 of both, 50 copies sets.
So have you had anybody come in and ask for copies of it, just directly to you or city set? If we have 50 copies sitting here? Now, I know we had some ceremonial copies that were passed out to the commissioners and the boards and you and things like that. That was 50, was it? No.
I think it's the museum has them for sale.
The museum?
The city would get that, and that's for them, I don't know who, I don't know what that was shipping.
But it's been used as a consistent resource, even though you've only sold four copies or downloaded a PDF or something like that. So they're getting it somehow, probably doing the sleuth, like I did it, find it in community order. Ideally, we needed to pop up a link right there, face the webpage. Exactly, I get that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, 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 just pop up button, just a button for that. I guess they have to be using that as a resource, because they know, we know what they're building.
So they, I'm more of a resource, resource.
Yeah, so the pattern book is living in front of us, yeah. That's a good point. It's a real good point.
I mean, I, people don't read, it's like it's mostly a picture book, it really is, but that's fine. People really don't read.
I think we ought to find a way to be able to go ahead and just make that easier, find the website if you're comfortable to that. Obviously, you are, and it sounds like you and Scott are going to be able to address that issue pretty easily, that pattern book.
So I don't solely owe me the pattern, I mean, that's not a purpose to have that in mind.
Okay.
Just for that.
That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Are you just going to ask something else?
No, the others, Roger's and Jen's questions address through to people who want to look at it, should be able to find and look at it, whether it's a copy at the library, whether there's a copy at City Hall down the stairs, or whether it's online.
By the way, one thing, Miss Faith, your primary agreement that you signed with Becky and the mayor, reference to the exhibit, this is the exhibit reference, this is the standard contractual term. This is where you're finding the disconnect sometimes in between disagreement and that, because both of them are actually together.
Well, I understand that, but I can't say.
It wasn't conveyed to you that way when you signed it.
I can have clearly more understanding of that.
Thank you for sharing.
Do I have to give you the question? Yes, may I? Didn't the city pay to have that pattern made for themselves? I mean, like, they purchased it? I was under the impression it was like $300 or something? For the doctors and the pressure, or for? For the services to be have more competitive, because it's powerful?
What was applied already?
Yes, may I?
See now, the cooks, I do, really? That must be the night for talking important. I've known that they gave me their, like, two years. She's quite a young one, a lot of different jobs, my business and everything else, you know, very young. Now, we have a situation, just actually, we've been very, very rocky with all the homes that have been built over there, and dressed with the grades and everything else, really. Only certain people, that's all. But we've only had maybe five or six situations where we've had problems with grades. And Ariel, that's another position, she gets stuck into doing grades and everything else. But I think it's time now, and I've, Becky Lee talked about it, and everything else, that is, we have a situation on Washington and Ohio that might end up settling in court. And it's a situation where they built the grade up way, way too high. With those rains, I was there, it would happen, and they're shaking, we took the pictures and all, I went and shot all the grades and everything else. And I think it's time, like I said to Lee, that we sit down with the engineering firm we have, and let them do the job that they're prepared to do and are professionally made to do, and that is grades in different situations with elevations. And in this situation, there's a house sitting on the corner of Washington and Ohio, I shot the grades on it. It's almost four and a half feet higher than the ground of the road on the board. And all that rain we had, all that flooding. And all that rain we had, all that flooding, it came down and took the shakers, all the front yard out and everything else. And we've had some bad situations. I think it's time that we sit down and negotiate with our engineer, who's doing most of all work anyhow, and sit down with them and say, well, how much more would it charge when the house is getting ready to be, they bring in the plan, ready to do? That the engineer can review that and look at the grades and figure out where we stand and what we're doing. Because all the years that I've been in business, all over anywhere up in that other state that I came from, I must mention Indiana, up there and down here in Ohio, the same elevation from the crown of the road has been throughout a whole history of the United States that I know. Now, I think it's time that it's perfect time right now, make the response away from that lady and sit down with the engineer and I'm willing to do that with me and get this in straightened out so we don't have this problem again, not just for there, but we've been very, very lucky with what we have with the grades. Very lucky.
Thank you.
But I think we do, we gotta start doing something.
Scott, you already responded to that. Is this something we bother?
Yeah, I have, uh, written to the affordability of the commission and they've never responded as to whether or not, uh, we can put maximum grades. Because going back to amendment affordability, this is something that's addressed in the affordability code. We had another issue where they came back and said, no, we couldn't do that. They never came back and addressed the issues. So it would seem to me if you could put a, you know, height, a maximum height, it's not inconsistent with the floor building, you know, if you have a minimum floor elevation, we're not lowering the minimum floor elevation, just so you can't go above a certain amount. Now, on top of that, it was, it's mine to him, not an engineer, but regardless of how you fill your land, you still have to design your property to keep all the rainfall on your property to a certain level of rain. So regardless of how high you build it, they still have to be engineered a certain way to retain the water. So even if someone builds something high, it should not be draining, draining off the property if it was designed properly, which would be a same time issue.
Is there any more sample that you?
One of the problems with that is that's a requirement after construction, when it's finished, it's done on the property. During construction, the only thing they got is that silthens and that the.
Running off during construction?
Yeah, during construction.
But that's a contractor's responsibility.
And it's a contractor's responsibility, and it's also the contractor's choice to increase the height of that floor elevation above minimum standards. And this is what we talked about, four, about putting a cap on that. Because currently, they just have a minimum standard. They don't tell you that you can't go four feet higher than that. And I thought this, after Nancy Lee brought my attention, the house, since her house, I brought this to town and said, can we do something about? I'm actually, we sit here, we go through these, um, these, uh, what they're, they're used for certification of appropriations. And then all of a sudden, one of the things that affects the architectural look is how high you put this thing in, in reference to everything that's around you. So to me, that should be a component that's an ingredient in, in the whole. And so, uh, you know, when we look at it, I think if I remember to understand correctly, because they haven't responded to us to tell us no, we could put that rule into effect, but it may be challenged by the state.
It, it could be challenged by the state. Um, I can go back there. There was a law passed this legislative session that dealt with amendments to the affordability code and the review process. I don't know if that would come into play. My analysis is I just don't think even a, affordability code may set a minimum floor elevation. Well, our proposal is not inconsistent with that.
Correct.
So we're not changing the minimum. We're not saying, no, it can be seven foot, not eight foot. We're saying, you gotta make the minimum, but we don't want to exceed a certain cap for architectural reasons. Um, I don't know that, that doesn't sound inconsistent with the affordability code.
I don't know what the rest of the mission is, but I would push forward on, on, you know, doing the cap.
Yeah, I would too. Can I clarify something? This kind of word that seems to be left out of this conversation. The woods development has a site grading plan that the majority of the builders are aware of and use. And in each of the lots, there's supposed to be a swell between the property and where that water is retained. But there's three different lot conditions in the woods. There's may, maybe seed, a ton of grain. So it depends on the lot, how the lot needs to be graded, because the water should be going to the retention ponds. That's holding every deal of water, unlike all the rest of Lake Helen that does not have a grading plan. We do not have water retention. So making a rule for, for a community that has a grading plan that is not applicable for the rest of the city may not be the wisest thought. If the development is not retaining the water correctly, maybe their, um, piping system is clogged, maybe that's an HOA problem. So, and I remember that storm where that, because I happened to be on High Street that same day, and then I drove over to Lakeview and Lakeview was six inches underwater. So that was just a really bad storm. Um, and, you know, there's a fall from Main Street to Ohio that's probably 15 feet. And we know what water does in gravity, it travels. So to, you know, some of that is probably a citywide grading issue that we have never done. We've never looked at, we do it lot by lot. But if the woods has a engineered water retention system, so that's very important to look at.
One, one of the.
She's completely right. I gotta say something. You're completely right. Believe me.
Cookie, you going to come up here?
Yeah.
One of the issues that would cause my intention is that one of the roads was improperly graded and it wasn't graded to, for the water to go to the retention pond. And that water flow is coming in High Street or Euclid, High Street.
You're a hundred percent right because that's how I shot.
You're not in the cookie season.
Say no man of cook. But anyhow, I shot the grades on that road and it's the only road, Chris, in there that does not take the water. But not to doubt, I looked at that when I was involved with that. All the water, Mayor Chris, was to be retained from that whole building into the road retention pond. That is the only road that has a hump at the end that makes it the water go that way. If the road was graded properly with the plan, like she said, you looked at the plan, I did. That road was supposed to be pitched down into the development. It's the only road that has a hump at the end that throws it out the High Street. That's the only problem we got there. But then the builder comes in and starts putting all this wood up and building up. And I couldn't believe what he was doing. And I actually complained to that gentleman right there. And I wanted to see the engineer over there get the big strength gap. And they already have poured the concrete, put the locks up. And this thing is next to a person's house that just built, the new house next door. And this thing is up there. You're right, Scott, you're supposed to hold 80% of the bottom of your quarter on your water pump. That's the regulation.
Thank you. So, uh, Commissioner, if you're more, we have another speaker. Just to end the conversation or is it forward or to future?
Captain, my, my reticence to, to go forward is the creative elements affect that lock and commit the laws. Um, and, and I would want to look at that before we run down that path. I don't think that we can selectively create movements just from one development unless it's part of the beginning, such a new beginning. So, you know, that, that works out. But.
Rick, I'm not talking just about that. I am talking about the city.
Thank you.
That's all I'm saying. I just.
I agree. We, we would go with a citywide, that's on type great.
Yeah.
Love it. So I think that would work out for everyone.
Now, Commissioner, is this something that you folks would like to bring up for, for the ministry to review them back to the next meeting or other non-approaches?
This would be a change to your, um, land development regulations. So it should go to, for sure, your PMRC for recommendation. And you may want to have a historic board also, if this is an architectural aspect of it, you may want their input, but they're limited to geographic areas and certain areas. So it would not come back to you, unless you wanted to look at it before it went to the advisory board. It really wouldn't come back to you until it went through the advisory board process and the recommendation.
Is this something you folks would like?
Yes, I would.
I would. Question?
Yeah, I'll entertain the discussion for sure. It's just a discussion.
Yes. Minister, you have some direction about?
I have the direction. Just a recommendation too, of the engineer is looking at a specific solution for High Street, the pond coming off Washington. Uh, we're aware of that and there is an engineering solution to that being developed right now.
Really appreciate that. Excellent. You do have enough speakers. Thank you for your patience. My name is Ash.
Good evening, Jeffrey Chief, Free Tech, West Michigan. Just a couple of comments on the dialogue, nothing about water retention or drainage that's way above my neighbor's, but, um, when we built the end building process in Lake Helen, we were listening several years ago, you want to recognize that one of the reasons we chose that location was because of the standards, uh, because we wanted to invest in offer our home. And we wanted to make sure that we were grounded with what retained. So the dialogue tonight, um, I just encourage you to, it, it's, it's a big deal, that inspection. You're right. Without that, everything else is just words on paper. Attorney Simpson's comments about how far we've come, uh, that's probably the main point I would like to make. That is absolutely correct. Uh, when we started, it was kind of, you kind of had standards in place, but it really, it was still messed up for interpretation. Um, but, uh, the thing that has impressed me the most, we've been interested in ours over the last several years and Chris is of course a neighbor. Um, probably one of the best examples of good governance and how communities should govern themselves that I have heard in my life. Certainly a lot of various spirited debate. Chris and I have certainly had an spirited debate and conversation, but everyone involved is pulling in the same direction for a good outcome. And, uh, where we are today certainly is, uh, well, and I just encourage, uh, as we go through this transition that we try to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any more conversation regarding this? I don't know. Yes? No. Good.
So we're gonna have something coming back to us when, November?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, before I close out, did you have anything else on this? Before I close down, I want to say, Sarah, thank you so much for the dedication and the time. I can understand when somebody gets some place in their life and they're like, I'm ready for new opportunities and this is a little bit too much, too much. And I can also appreciate when there's dirty work to do and it's hard. And, uh, I appreciate that you've done that for us. So thank you. Moving forward to city ministry reports? Oh, you have something?
Just a minute. Yeah, take five.
Let's take five minutes, folks. It's eight twenty and let's come back here at eight twenty-five. Guilty.
I'm guilty?
Whatever it is, I'm guilty.
Oh, I, I remember. I, apparently I'm guilty of all this. But you know, what are you talking, what's the subject on that? I can't hear you. Where'd you want to start? It's too late. I was there during the rainstorm. And I was there after the rainstorm. I've been there for the other rainstorm. The hindsight, we did certainly twenty twenty six, but that's definitely addressed for their performance. I don't know that we have anything. I would say they stay in there on that road and see it three, five feet above. And it works out and there's nothing there. Yeah, they lost so much time on that. And then all they do is learn the regular. And so it, it pulled up there too. It's gonna turn out, we've got, we've got a fix going on that short term, if we make more changes, but there's something I have to do. I'm kind of amenable to see what I can do. But I don't know anything about it. Put it on my notes, do research. Yeah.
You're very playing the game. Thank you. Okay, it's eight twenty-five and we're going to, please, we can wrap this up? report and we'll turn it over to the city later.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. Two items. Uh, first is the mold in the city hall. You can see the, uh, by the vents of what we did. And then the other, it's here, it's in the office on the south side of the building. And it needs to be, it needs to be treated. And we called in a phone company and they said, we had given an estimate back in 2008, what was considered to expect to be five thousand dollars. I asked the one about a month ago to clean the vents and, uh, which is a prerequisite to actually treating mold. And it was eight thousand dollars, which is not, that's too expensive. But apparently we're gonna have to fight it so we roll and treat this thing to the record. So we needed to, to clean the vents, to be rapid with the, of the heights going to the ceiling, causing condensation, which is feed the, the mold gives them the, uh, place to grow. Uh, and then mold people come in and actually kill it. So now, uh, I don't know the price of that. I will tell you that it's gotten to the point where Sharon Hall, our utility person, uh, is going to be coming back to work in probably two to three weeks, maybe a little longer. Uh, but her doctor has advised her not to come back in because of the mold in the city hall. So we're gonna relocate her to public works ground. Uh, it's office selected, five nice offices out there. Uh, so that's the city where we can clearly correct the situation here in city hall. So I'm bringing it to your attention, Lord Geoghan, we're working on the problem, we're going to the solution. I know it's gonna be a little bit expensive. I know it's gonna be relatively expensive, but it needs to be solved, so, solved and resolved. That's the extent of that.
You mentioned one of these, the AC ducts, you know when the last one got the sun?
It wasn't done in two thousand and eight because that's the problem, it was considered too expensive, so it's not a problem at all.
Was it duct cleaning services, Jeff? Is that what it is, duct cleaning services? Is that?
Duct cleaning, you had a duck, duct, duct cleaning.
Duct cleaning services? It's necessary, fire up the mold removal, it's a big animal.
So was this something that we had presented if we were on top of it?
The, the, the building had been attended to, perhaps, on the south side, everybody was saying the roof was weak. Actually, you stand back, the roof is not leaky, there's a high beam that spilled into the south side of the building, the first and second floor. And that particular high beam juts out to the point where the water comes down from the side of the building and goes into the crack at the top of the high beam and goes into the offices of John, me, and myself. And that's what's causing it.
It's almost like it needs a better, it's almost like that needs a better.
It, it, yeah, I could have it without, I mean, if you took it out there, it should be great. But it's, there is a better, so that, that's the problem there. These vents up here and that's other to the building, they need to be insulated so you don't have the condensation problem. And the mold itself, the spores throughout the building, they need to be eradicated so that they're attracted to these wet areas. So you need to remove the moisture to the building and then recontact the mold.
So going forward, do we have a maintenance plan for this building so we don't run into this issue again and it aren't down the line? So we're more prepared?
I'd love to tell you we do, but we've got a maintenance plan, I already mixed on what people do.
Yes, this is probably easy maintain.
Yeah, that's fine too.
And we also have the, we really look at maintenance. So what is it that you're asking for right now, are you going to get some correspondence for that? Or is that your, are you gonna bring it to the commission?
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just wanted you to be clear.
Do we have any redress to the commercial audit policies?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any redress to the commercial, commercial audit policies?
We have called our insurance company, they sent out a team to inspect, but they've not given us a verdict yet. On whether or not we're covered for this particular mold. My covering action is with not because they do say something about that happened in the last ninety days.
Did one more time, what was that?
Ninety days.
It has to happen within ninety days.
Yeah, yeah. But that's the new homeowners insurance, uh, uh, but we're not a homeowner, so. No, but it's still the same sort of insurance policy. What, basically what they're saying is if you don't report it immediately, that means you're irresponsible. Therefore, we're not gonna take care of the problem that got exacerbated because you wasted so much time telling us about it.
So two thousand and eight is way over ninety days. So keep clear.
Yeah, just like that.
Okay.
So that, I need to bring that problem to your attention, and then I'm gonna share the, how the public works here until it takes a while, and then to do that. Then the other one is.
That note, that note, how safe is it for any of our staff members to be in here, even us right now? Because that's opening up ourselves to, we know that there's mold, we're talking about it, we're addressing it. But yet we still are continuing to have meetings and, and work in the building that could potentially give health hazards.
That's an excellent point.
Right, so session just for listen to, if I'm not being correct and I'm on the turn.
No, you're spot on.
Into a predicament?
I don't want it to be the structures to the point of being hazardous, I don't know, it's more particular for, for me as also sensitivities, like health issues that may make it more, I mean, and I think, you know, the question is what can we do about it realistically? I mean, is there an option to carry the building down and do something else?
I would not, I was not going there.
So that's not really the option, so is there a place we go to get all the monstries somehow? We gotta make it as safe as possible, but we've got to address the mold issue. But, you know, it's not an easy, it's not a quick fix. And to, and I don't know if contamination to the point where it's actually something that would be hazardous. Maybe there's someone who can do a test to make sure that there's a, and there may be a point where you get to a certain level of contamination of the mold.
Or maybe a certain room.
It's a, or a certain room.
I personally, and this just me, I would feel more comfortable knowing that it's still safe to occupy the building or certain rooms that have the mold, maybe sitting on the safe side, especially for our staff and residents who are entering the building.
Yeah, we have not even attempted to check the air quality because we know there's evidence of it. It's not a matter of how bad, it's that we know we have to eliminate it. We can certainly check, the particular employee we called in two months and a half told him that's the reason. That her doctor advised her not to enter a situation like this. So it's not, I don't know if any other employees have suffered any particular ill effects. Although I have had one yesterday, said perhaps it's causing her problems, but I don't know that for that.
Okay, so what you're saying is you're, you're working on it?
What I'm saying is we, we have a problem, we know it exists and we're trying to resolve it as quickly as we can. It's gonna be, it is probably gonna be expensive, and I couldn't define what expensive is, but it's, it's something that's gonna be, you know, be more than go away. It's probably gonna be less expensive than tearing the building down, going to the city quarters. It's probably more useful than putting a tent up outside for us to be able to work underneath because we get kicked out of there because, because it's contaminated. I, I, I think we need to, we aggressively are solving this problem and, and not to have a scab off of something that could cost us more money than we could have possibly think about fixing the problem. Right, no, I agree, that's what we're trying to do. But I do want to draw your attention as a sole purpose of making part of my, my notes.
When do you expect to be able to update?
I hope you have something about a better tent. We have a lot of things in the current tent, I've written some on it too, but I'll try.
Yeah, with all due respect, it's a critical event for me.
Yeah, I have a certain job and I do everything I can to do it.
Thank you. Anything else?
For the overall renovations to repair our problems or anything else, can that be added? Any requests that you're working on for the state funding? To improve this building?
We did send in a request for funding for new windows for the city hall, for a new roof. Now, the new roof does leak, I don't think that's the primary cause of the mold. And we do know that the windows are not good for retaining the air conditioning and energy efficient. And when it's found out there, maybe the ones we had can be rebuilt with a brand new again. But they certainly don't help the mold situation, I don't think they're, they're really key to solving either. The roof is probably more key to solving, but I don't think it's a major problem. But neither Scott nor I are engineers, we just said so.
Put something like this on to a possible ECHO grant?
I'm sorry?
An ECHO grant for?
ECHO grant may.
Restore?
It may be, and I ask, and I answer this. We do, we're familiar with the Echo people, we're familiar with the, I don't know, Volusia forever people, good people. Right now, they're gonna bring out how much, what's the, what are the chances? There are just too many questions we could ask, and they don't have the answers to it. But then they'd be a problem too.
Okay, so I hope you, you're gonna go down and see if you can have something that I'm assuming you can. And then second?
The, the, actually, what we've been talking about, I couldn't tell you, we're gonna do a search salary survey, we're gonna do salary surveys together. You know, pitch department, be able to be, come to three, four meetings a go. And I wanted to know that we are working on that building now, we do have a couple of statewide salary surveys. Now we need to take and define positions. Cities will call, some people will affect the assistance, some people will call them secretaries, some people will call them admin assistants, as we do. But essentially, they're all the same people, we've got to figure out which ones we have in that, in the mix of job description. Then we've got to narrow it down, for some reason, this statewide survey is heavily weighted to the south of Orlando on the line. We don't have that many populose here in Volusia, and this is where inflation rates come from. People, you know, working right now, we can see more attractive locations than here, vice versa, we can't find some in front of this area. So we need to get a better handle on positions within the Volusia, on the immediate area. This will, again, tell you that we're working on that, I want to have that, I want to have that soon, soon, it's coming up here all the time. We're working on that, and we'll be getting, so we are, now we've got the finances for the police officers. Now we've got the salary survey and the other than salary survey, we promise we'll be keeping for everybody, so doing it all at once.
Any comments, Commissioner? No, I'm forward to seeing it.
Yeah.
Okay, Roger, can I, oh, can we have that called to you? Let's go by and buy someone that you, oh, definitely. So Roger, I think you have closing remarks, any comments, any comments, thank you.
Yes, I had some discussion with a few people after the candidate meeting over at the bills. An issue that really affects Lake Helen is the county district meeting that's under way. If anybody hasn't paid attention to that, there's seven proposals on where we would end up in and in which district. I think three of them keep us with Deland, one of them puts us with Deltona and Dever, one of them puts us with Newsmar and Beach. And one of us just hang with Deltona and Lake Helen.
Roger, do you know if that meeting on the twenty-eighth is still being held?
Yes, the next meeting is the twenty-eighth, but you can also email or call your county council representatives and voice your opinion on where you want Lake Helen to be. If you want to be with Newsmar Beach or Deltona or stay with Deland.
Is that where we're going now?
Or with Deland, you know, the northwest section of Volusia.
The question that, the question that she had is currently being followed with the districts, we have, we have.
There was also, there was also a recommendation on something, the city manager, the city wants to pick which one we would recommend to be part of.
Oh, yeah, I know the other meeting is, it's on, it says, go sign and consent, so if you folks can write a letter for them, is the issue.
So I, I'd like to share, ten years ago, we went through this, and the school board was also redistricting as well too. We had a contingent of Lake Helen folks that all showed up to one of these meetings and we said, Deland and Lake Helen are pretty joint at the hip. Ellen, Deland, Lake Helen, we've always been joint at the hip. And we've got a message for us in a solid, strong way because these same maps are very similar to what we were looking at. They're, they're like, there was like four choices, well, because of population increase, then we have all these seven choices. So five thirty, County Admin Building. Five thirty, County Admin Building, y'all show up?
I'm not COVID, I'm playing.
Uh, COVID is coming Thursday night, five thirty is coming Thursday night, and, and let your voice be heard.
Hey, hey, if you keep us with Deland.
But I think the county council, I think.
Yeah, I'll get some research on that too, thank you.
I'll put motion on the table for staff to send letters to the county and agree with any one of the plans that keeps us with the land.
Second, so please, we raise your motion by mass in a second, I press her. To have staff send a letter to the county to pay any one of these districting out that keep Lake Helen in the line. Anybody else who should come down? You see, I'm up here, I'm sitting here, I'm sorry. Analysts, Craig Avenue. We all allowed to then contact our council members at each county.
Yeah.
By email and tell them what our desires are.
Yeah, you're allowed to contact anyone.
Right, okay, just making sure, any else?
Or all of them.
All of them. Yeah, they're a government body just like we are, so.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a motion, all of you can say aye.
Aye.
Anyone? No? Motion's done. You've got a question?
Also, I got one more thing, thank you, Roger. This mainly pertains to the commissioners and the administrator, and if Scott wants to attend, he's welcome to attend. On another item to add to November tenth, besides the Veterans Day ceremony at nine AM and a commission meeting at seven PM. The Florida branch of the American Legion, the Florida commander of our state for the American Legion is coming to Lake Helen to visit us. And the commission and the staff are invited to attend, that'll be at three PM at the American Legion Hall.
And the test has to be eleven?
Test and plan.
At three?
At three PM. And any of the veterans that want to come out, feel free to come out, any of the source of people wanting to come out, feel free to come out.
Can you do Johnny? Johnny?
Well, Johnny was the last one, but I already beat it. On November ninth, the Massacre James Center is having a party for Daisy Brown's work for her time for the, being the mayor of the town. And on Saturday, the sixth, they're having a veterans dinner for four PM for the veterans. Any veterans welcome to attend? It'll be at the Massacre James Center also.
Is that all you've got?
Nothing.
So, four?
Couple of things, my system, my PC just shut down, it's powered, so it's Plan F and I. The packet only has three F's that we received, so GHI, I think, but it, or, I, I, I didn't get to a part of my system. Plan F has Lake Helen along with Deltona, Newsmar and Corona. Yeah, no. And, yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, parts of Deltona, Corona, Newsmar, I don't know what the other one is, so. Down to two, Plan F and Plan I, but I don't see Plan I.
I didn't, I didn't see them when I downloaded this packet off the county.
Yeah, and they, it just, it could have been, I, I don't know, I, I went back to it. So anyway, Plan F and Plan I, yeah, the second thing, yeah, show up, call, Lake Helen, Deland, which didn't have that. And Deland, it was greater, but Lake Helen was somewhere else. When I talk about Palm Springs, Lake Helen populations and buildings and all that, and the revenues, I didn't tell you how many staff. Palm Springs has about forty plus staff to handle that, for a town of thirty-two, thirty. We have eighteen for a plant for a population of twenty-eight, thirty. We talked tonight about building maintenance issues, talked about public work maintenance issues, we talked about city administrative management issues, talked about PD maintenance issues, talked about what's gonna happen to this building. And I know that you guys have had a lot of your place, and it's not gonna stop. It's actually gonna get more here pretty soon with the rezoning coming up here. And you guys need more help? This, 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 this city needs more help, you guys are overworked. I, I get, and I don't mean disrespect by any of this, I get calls and emails from folks, and I can't speak to other commissioners of course. Man, it's tough to get a hold of people at city hall, all the Christian guys are busy. It's tough to get emails back, I get them back as I'm a commissioner, okay, thank you, by the way. But, but it's, it's tough, it's tough for the citizens to communicate and get answers in a relatively easy time. And it is, it's because you guys have got so much on your plate, if you stop, we have all these public records, but I get it, I'm not talking about stopping, you know, that's, that's what we do, what we have to do, but we all know significantly. But we all know significant public record requests dominate a time, dominate staff's time. And we need an answer to that. That's never gonna go away either. The public has a right to know. And city administration, for me, I would love to see now, since you've been on six months, seven months, how you've organized staff's workload. Who's responsible for what? Communications and things of this nature. I don't know how to run a city, but I know we've got red lights coming up here, and we're not gonna get out of here if we don't get more people. But then before we get more people, what are they going to do? You know, we've plugged a lot of holes with Diane, and I know we're missing Sharon, and Donnie, you've stepped up in a major way, right? We all recognize, at least I do up here, I'm pretty sure our substitute too. But I can see what's happening. The building's not gonna go away, the building demand's not gonna go away, it's just gonna get more and more popular. Because of the stuff Ariel's done, the stuff the city's done. And eventually, we're gonna have a lot more property come online over here in all the side of the woods. And we're just working on Volusia forever, we've got some property. There's so much going on, and we're forgetting, not forgetting, we're having a hard time managing our public's needs too at the same time, while you're handling other public's needs at the same time. It might make sense, I'm not trying to upset anybody here. Okay, but the city administrator, we just need an organizational chart, and I know you're smart too, but I'm trying to help, you help us. You guys need help, Seth is gonna need help.
One, let me give you an encouraging sign. That Ponsonville thing was a little scary. From my perspective, there are five people in Ponsonville that do what I do, that are not full-time positions. Now, that includes, we have the finance director in Zach, we have a planner in Sean from East Central, so there are two positions right there. Donnie has four positions, and Ox will do what she does. But I've been cautious because I want to make sure the finances we're capable of carrying.
I understand, expansion, but we're gonna have to address the finances, if we have to get skinny, we gotta get skinny. And one thing I want, let me finish, one last thing. Because it resonated with me yesterday, Sunday afternoon, you know, with Buddy Stone's dedication ceremony. When Buddy was, before Buddy was in there, he was still involved in the city, his dad was, Brady was, some of that, Stone, of course. But what really, really resonated with me is that at one point in time, his dad, other family members had the everything here. We had a power utility, handled that, had learned about the backup truck, that's another story. Anyway, what resonated with me is that Buddy's heart and soul was, we just had to do it. It had to get done. Sometimes we had to do it, but I ain't getting paid. And I respect that, no end for the Lakeview that loves Lakeview then. Because it had to get done, Lakeview didn't have a lot of money, didn't have a whole lot of place to go for either. They borrowed and stole, you know, that type of thing, scrouching. You know, that was Rick Muggs as well too, he grew up in that environment back in, you know, twenty-five years ago. And it's just been in the past ten or twelve, fifteen years, that Lakeview's gotten its hands out in the sand now. And we've got opportunity here, I always talk about managing our opportunity. And we can't go back to those days, that old Lakeview's gone. It's sad that I am to say that. Because rank and file of a common volunteer can volunteer, but that volunteer can volunteer to a point where he has significant liability. And that's more costly than precious time a volunteer pays us. So it really resonated with me last, because that Lakeview that Buddy Stone grew up in, and so passionate about, the heart and soul is here, but the operation of the city is not like that anymore. And it won't get any easier. So this is why I bring this out now, for future commissioners, future city administrators, whatever, we have to grow, we have to grow our, I'm sorry, further. And to be able to respond quickly, in a timing manner, the discussions of Ariel, I mean, you guys are so overlooked. It's easy to see how things get from one month to the next. So that's all I needed to say there. But I just wanted to get that out there for the public and us. Buddy resonated with me last time.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins, Bob, the only problem I have is how do you fix a problem that costs money when you don't have the money to fix it?
Yeah.
And I've said since I've never been sat up here, the biggest problem that town has ever had is lack of money. And the communities like we have in Woods have come a long way towards that. My biggest fear, I said it in the meeting thirty years ago with the town on me, was that this predominantly blue collar city will be radically changed when those houses are torn down and other houses are put up in order to pay for the services that you say that we need, and we need them. So when we made this move, we had to be very careful that we don't destroy what we are. It's very similar to, somebody said, what happened if he left? Well, the British ships started to come in. There's always something that happens as an unintended consequence. And so we need to do this dance, we need to move in this direction, but we need to see where the catalyst is gonna be. Because they're gonna be there.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of things I'd like to add. Commissioners, just reminding you that the evaluations for the city administrative panel, please do so. Okay. I also want to thank staff and public boards for the putting together and helping us coordinate the surrogacy dedication. And I want to thank all the commissioners who attended, it was really made very special by you all, thank you. Also, remind our citizens that we do have an opening on the St. historic board. So if you have a chance, please do look into that and share that with others that might be looking to participate in our local government. Another thing, I received a call from one of our citizens about Temple Gator, a nine eighty lake, Lakeview. And if anybody would like to have that gator moved out, and if you see it, please call 1-866-FWCGATOR. The number is 866-392-426, and thank you to both of the providers there. Officially, Cam and the board, we met at the elections office, and we tested all the equipment, I want to thank our city administrator, commissioner, and we do have Commissioner Carl Walker as well. We're going to reconvene back there at 5:00 PM on November 2nd. And reminding all our citizens, early voting is open, and it's all going through this week, through the 29th, from eight in the morning to 5:00 PM at the supervisor of elections office at 1-750-SOUTH-UPPER-BULLEBRAY. If you've got any questions, you can call the supervisor over there at 386-736-5930. And on the note of growing in population, we did receive the latest numbers, and it's just 2,913. So as Lysley was saying, we were 2,000 eight ordered to, and that number is now 2,913. All I can say is thank you very much, and I think you've done a lot of work, Mr. City Administrator. And with all that, God bless you all, have a good night, evening, gentlemen.